Before I really get started, I want to read this advisory on the pandemic and then we'll get into the agenda. Pandemic advisory during the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting is being held both in person virtually and virtually. As a courtesy to all of the attendees, should this meeting run past 8:00 PM and beyond, a short recess will be called about that time. For the public record, for all speakers, please speak clearly and directly into the microphone in order for your voices to be recorded and heard by the virtual attendees. For virtual attendees who wish to participate during the meeting, for the public portions of this meeting, click on the hand icon in the upper right-hand corner of your screen and unmute your microphone when it is your turn. Staff will unmute you and let you speak until you are live. You have three minutes to speak. Please state your name, residence, and the proper use of the decorum. The council may choose to respond to your comments and/or move on to the next commentator until all have been heard. Staff will only be monitoring the raised hand function. Other questions will not be monitored. Okay, we're going to start our agenda. We'll call the meeting to order and we'll have the Fledge of Allegiance, please. Mrs. Green, would you do it tonight, please? All right, first, order thing is roll call.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Mayor Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Kellum.
Here.
Councilmember Morrison.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond.
Here.
Okay, public participation, and we have a couple cards on that. I'm going to call them in order as they came in. Virginia, oh no, I'm sorry, it was Brad Purville, Virginia Dersky, second.
Good evening to all our elected officials and staff. First. I'm here to talk about the trees and things like that. I know you all have spent a lot of time and effort into it. I understand possibly coming up for a vote today, but I just want to say thank you because you all had an open mind to look at different issues. The council members took their time to delve into the issues and you really listened to the community. So I just want to say thank you because it was unexpected that we brought this up at such a late notice, and thanks for your time. Thank you for your consideration. Have a nice day.
Thank you, sir. Have a good evening. Thank you. Thanks for being here. The other one is Virginia Dersky.
Yes, I'm Jean Dersky, and I am almost repeating what Brad just said. I am particularly grateful for Mr. Morrison and Mr. Morley getting together interpreting the new parking boardings, which was applied and allowed us to save the trees that we were concerned about. And I really would like to continue to be involved moving forward. We have native trees all around the city that probably need protection and hopefully in the future, native trees will be planted more frequently with respect to the Resiliency Plan and the sustainability practices of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Okay, council, we are moving into our consent agenda. Does anybody wish to withdraw anything from this agenda? That closes public participation, by the way. I don't have any more cards. Daniel, I forgot about you back there. We have anybody that would like to speak on the public participation?
Yes, sir. We have one hand raised at this time, Daniel Marshall. Daniel, you're unmuted. If you'd like to unmute yourself, you have three minutes.
All right, I'm unmuted. My name is Daniel Marshall. I reside at 300 Columbia Drive, 3304. I've lived here for 16 years. I moved here because it was a quieter type of beach town, a smaller town feel to it. Most of the businesses were in business areas, and that was fine with me. I'm, of course, mostly commenting on the short-term rental issue. You know, let's just be clear upfront, I believe these are mini hotels. They are businesses. The people who run them are business people, and of course, the difference here is they're being superimposed within, you know, all of our residential areas. You know, I've heard some of them say things to the effect that they felt that the apps they use, like, you know, VRBO, will police any bad behavior or anything going on. I'm not buying that. It may police a fine for their business purposes, but not for the residential persons, if such as that. I do believe that they should have somebody who is authorized to act available 24/7, and that the property owners should be responsible for any fines or citations that come about because of bringing in people from wherever, wherever, you know, into our town. And in general, I just want to conclude by saying I support the legislation that the city councils were. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Daniel?
Yes, we have Marlene, I do apologize if I mispronounced this, Marlene Muscatello. Marlene, you're live. You have three minutes. Are you there, Marlene?
That's one more time. Check once more, please.
Marlene, you're unmuted if you'd like to speak. You're showing as self-muted.
All right, we're closed. Is that it, Daniel?
We have one more hand raised. Rhonda Brenninger. Rhonda, you're unmuted. You can unmute yourself. You have three minutes.
Great, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Hey, I just want to speak on the ordinance 1021 on vacation homes. I wanted to say the first line of the ordinance states that the commissioners will be, quote, "making findings of facts," unquote. I've attended all the meetings leading to this, including the Planning and Zoning Committee, and I am finding that the commissioners and city manager have not provided any findings of fact. The first misleading fact that they provided, residents, is that there are as many as 600 vacation rentals in the city of Cape Canaveral. The truth is that their own list of VTRs shows that they have fewer than 300, and over two-thirds of those have operated in the city for longer than 20 years. They include the Royal Mansions and Cape Winds. The city manager wants to exclude these CAMs, as he called it, from being affected by their new unnecessary ordinance restrictions, so that really reduces the number of vacation homes that are even existing in the city. The other point is that the city manager has never provided a true number of vacation homes that they're trying to affect. The other missing fact is council has shown zero relation to a vacation home's total occupancy and the number of noise or trash violations. They have not provided one example or one fact. Council is depending also on recommendations from leaders of a planning and zoning meeting that occurred a week ago. At that meeting, vacation homeowners in attendance became very aware that the planning and zoning members knew very little about the vacation rental industry. Only fact that was provided by Mr. Lamar Russell was that he stated, quote, "My neighbor said he was going to buy a house next to me and turn it into a party house, and that's exactly what he did. He made it a party house. I researched this home. It's across the street from Mr. Lamar Russell, and it's not that the vacation home is not the problem. The problem is, is that somebody in planning and zoning allowed a home to be built with a pool and a hot tub in the front of the house." Also, if you're a resident who feels that you are for these ordinances, you should be very upset that council has not provided you with any facts, but has only made misleading statements to intentionally anger you. No facts, just unsubstantiated statements to breed unfounded fear and anger of the citizens of this community. Mayor Hoag has a well-documented hatred of Airbnbs. He repeatedly referred to them as airbugs at the October 2020 city council meeting. Ordinances of any kind that are unjustified when there are no facts to support them, and so far, city council has provided zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel?
One more hand raised at this time, Felicity McDonald. Felicity, you're unmuted. You can unmute yourself. You have three minutes.
Hello, this is Felicity McDonald. I live out here on Adams Avenue. I am a resident here for about four years. I'm not angry, but I do support the city's ordinance from a resident in the area point of view. You know, an ordinance would make some of the issues that occur more enforceable than without that ordinance. You can do nothing really, so I wanted to thank the city council for considering this and wanted to voice my support for the regulations. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. All right, Daniel?
We have a hand raised from Robert Simek. Robert, you're unmuted. You can unmute yourself. You have three minutes.
Yes, hello, my name is Robert Simek. I recently just purchased a house in the area within the last several months. I purchased the house with the intention of actually setting up potentially Airbnb as well as a vacation home for myself. I'm a little surprised at the city's decision to go ahead with the ordinance, and obviously I am opposed to it. You know, in my workings here, we've come here, we've put in $100,000 to renovate this house because we're trying to bring quality people in here, offer quality establishment. I'm hiring local people in Cape Canaveral to do the work, do the renovations. I've already discussed and worked with several people that live in Cape Canaveral. That would be the actual, like, cleaning lady, so I'm a little surprised in the sense that, you know, I'm providing jobs, providing income to local people, you know, and really, at the end of the day, what really is the difference from an Airbnb versus the hotel that's 700 yards down the road? Anyone could come and go to those hotels, they have any grief questions, they can walk down the street, cause any kind of issues, and realistically, my objective is not to have any kind of, you know, like, we're obviously trying to get quality people in here that are going to be good, quiet renters. We're trying to have a nice, relaxing establishment. It's a beautiful community. We chose it specifically because it was nice, quiet, quaint, and I'm definitely opposed to this because I think it's just, it's detrimental to the community. You know, we're preventing money from coming into the area. If anything, we're trying to take it away by, you know, doing this, and I just think it's a shame that the city is thinking about going ahead with this. There's so many other ways that we could look at it. There's a few things that need to be fixed, but I definitely am in disagreeance with the ordinance of the 1021. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, a point of order, the public participation, you can hear anything you want to hear, but it should be on items that do not appear on the agenda, so if somebody indicates they want to speak about vacation rentals, you can ask them to hold that comment until we come to that point.
We started off just with one, and then it got to where we're at, but I understand that if we didn't have a public participation, the first one started speaking on it. And we went into consent agenda, and it didn't get pulled by a council member, and it passes on through, then the public doesn't have a right to speak on it, once it's off the agenda.
I was referring to vacation rentals, which is not on consent.
Yeah, no, but I'm saying the first gentleman started speaking on it, but he didn't indicate. But anyway, we'll go off of this subject because I don't want to hear what I heard the last time we did. So, anyway, Daniel? Anybody else to speak on public participation on resort rentals or the Airbnbs? Will this, will we get there?
No, no hands raised at this time for anything else at this time, no, sir.
Okay. I'd ask Mr. Legal, what do we do if it goes through without? If somebody wants to speak on it? We have to go back to it?
I think that the manager was just saying point of order. Under public participation, residents and citizens have the ability to come and speak on matters that aren't already scheduled for a public hearing on the agenda. Vacation rental testimony or comment should be reserved when the ordinance is taken up by the council, not during public.
What if it's not taken up under consent?
Well, it's not on consent. Vacation rentals is a public caring item?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So if someone had a comment regarding consent, they certainly can make those comments during public participation.
I'm sorry, my bad. I thought it was, okay. I was thinking, wrong. All right. We're in a way till we get to that item, because I know there's a lot of, I got a lot of cards on it. And I will hold you to the three minutes, too. I'm going to tell you before you get up to that red light blinks, shut it down, get ready to close it, because I'll hold you to three minutes, because we got like seven or eight cards on it. Consent agenda.
Yes.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just briefly pull item number two on the trees.
Okay.
And if I can just make one comment on item number three first, I want to thank Mayor Pro Tim Raymond for doing that. I think that's great. But in some event that you can't, if something comes up, I'm happy to do that if that's the council's will, so just as.
Let's wait till we get to that item. Okay. Have item two pulled? Anybody else? Nothing else? Okay, we'll look for a motion for items one and three.
I'll make a motion that we approve item one, one and three on the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion to pass items one and items three on the consent agenda. Overroll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, back to item number two, Mr. Morrison.
Yes, sir. Real fast here, I just want to echo the residents and say thank you to our city manager and this council to do this. I think it's a win-win. Thankfully, we got it in time. I'm looking forward to seeing it unfold. The comment that I want to make, if the council's willing, is that we still remain flexible in here. The goal that I was hoping was to save, you know, first priority was save all the trees. That's not realistic with some of the proposals, but if the council's willing, the area where the trees are being removed, we did receive an email from a citizen that proposed some alternatives to work in parking spaces on that eastern and southern corner, that if there's an opportunity to put a few spaces over there and save some trees in the southwest corner, and it makes sense that this is just a statement of encouragement to our city manager, if the council's willing to remain flexible in there and try to even exceed what we're trying to approve today.
Mayor, I'd be happy to address that. I had Gustavo Vergara contact that person, and I believe that's the woman who wasn't able to speak or unmute herself there. Muscatello, I believe, was her name, and her comment was that in a previous email that she wanted us to investigate saving seven parking spaces on the western end of Harrison Avenue and leave them green spaces. Gustavo, correct me if I'm wrong, you had a very cordial conversation with her. However, the problem is, we don't know where else to put the parking spaces. I mean, wherever you're going to put them, it's going to require, I mean, we filled up the whole area around the park basically with parking spaces. We've reduced most of the parking spaces to the new nine-foot wide requirement from previously the 10-foot wide. We put in the maximum number of compact car parking spaces, which is, I believe, 30%. We have saved, we just took off 10% of required parking in accordance with the ordinance if you do a certain percentage of previous paving, and also motorcycle parking, we've done that. So we've used every incentive we can and shrunk and reduced and pushed and squeezed and squeezed to save as many trees as we can to take another seven places and put them somewhere else. I don't know where you can put them on that park. We've looked at it as much as we can, and Gustavo's call with Mrs. Muscatello today was meant to elicit from her, well, where do you suggest we put these seven spaces? We can't just delete them. Where do we put them? And correct me if I'm wrong, but there was no constructive comment to that question, correct?
She stated that she would have to have more time, and her husband's a designer, in order for her to come up with suggestions. I emailed her the plan, but again, yeah, she didn't have a place to put them. She just felt that there had to be somewhere.
So while it may be wishful thinking, I'm perfectly happy to meet with her, and I would ask Gustavo that you set that up, the three of us meet and look at this plan and see if anything can possibly be done. It would be nice if we could. We'll certainly be open-minded, absolutely open-minded to it. No preconceived ideas on the whole thing. We'll see what we can come up with.
Thank you. Yeah, and that's really, it's not as much about that citizen's comment, which I certainly value, it's just more to say that don't be scared to, if you see new opportunities arise, that if this council's okay, you can do a little trading in there. The area that jumped out to me was at the top of the backwards L, as you call it, right there, the left field of the, of the.
Little league.
Well, the other field that was going to be removed. On the west side there, there seemed like some gaps in there, but you know this map far better than I do, and I think you understand the sentiment that I'm.
We certainly care about the community issue, yes.
Thank you. That's all I had. No motion or anything out of me, just wanted to make that comment and see if council had any pushback or anything, but that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Counsel, I mean, counsel, Mr. Morley and the staff will look at it and.
We'll be happy to.
I don't think, do we need to ratify that, Mr. Attorney?
Just pass the consent agenda item, and that would be sufficient.
Okay, all right. All right, then we'll look for a motion on item number two.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt item number two to ratify modification to reduce parking spaces to preserve additional trees in accordance with the attached conceptual plan. I second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Morrison, and second by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond to, that's number two, ratified. Call the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, we'll go into public hearings, and the first one is ordinance number 1021. Mr. Garg, please.
Yes, sir. Ordinance 10-21, ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, amending section 110486 of the city code, regulating vacation rentals, making findings of fact, providing for definitions, requiring vacation rental registration, requiring inspections, specifying duties of vacation rental owners, and allowing agents, providing for maximum occupancy, providing limited exceptions for pre-existing contracts, providing requirements of vacation rental owners and agents related to sexual predators and offenders, requiring provisions for providing and posting safety information for occupants of vacation rentals, providing restrictions related to accessory structures, providing enforcement, providing for other miscellaneous provisions, providing for the appeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code, severability and an effective date. This is second and final reading of this ordinance. After first reading of the ordinance, the ordinance went to the Planning and Zoning Board. The Planning and Zoning Board conducted two public meetings regarding the ordinance, considered all of the terms, conditions in the ordinance, and the Planning and Zoning Board recommended the ordinance favorably, and they looked at the five specific issues that the city council directed that they look at, and the Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation included keeping the ordinance as written except the provision regarding accessory structures for sleeping. The P&amp;Z recommended removing that section from this ordinance and return that ordinance as a separate standalone ordinance addressing accessory structures applying in general, citywide. In addition, they recommended removing the provision regarding sexual predators and offenders. In addition, they also, they also recommended that, which one? Number four. Number four, yes. I hope staff that the three-year log be limited simply to the dates and number of occupants, and that is, and that is all regarding the log requirement. Again, this is second final reading, also a public hearing item. That's the mayor.
Thank you. Counsel? Have we all been, not with Mr. Morley, over this? I had a couple things, but I'd rather let counsel go first.
Yeah, I'm happy to start. In general, I look forward to hearing the public comments. On this, this is certainly an issue that I think has impacted some, one of us on both sides. I think we've heard quite a bit from the community on the issues with it. I'm thankful for council's last postponement to get it back to P&amp;Z board meeting was a long one, I know, and I want to thank the P&amp;Z board for working through that, and it was a four-hour meeting and several public comments. I also want to thank Councilmember Kellum for holding her meeting here. I think Space Coast League of Cities was involved and gave even more opportunity to hear where the public is. I think that there's a way that, you know, we can do this right and balance the issues that we've heard. I think that the legislative need here from us, the one that I feel like we've really got to get a handle on is the seven-day minimum. I think that that's the most difficult policy that our staff has struggled to enforce. That's where the software was proposed, basically working with a third party who specializes in rentals. I'm very interested in, you know, seeing that come to fruition and get a handle on that seven-day minimum. Whether you like the seven-day minimum or not, it is an ordinance that was passed years back, and my position is if you have an ordinance, you have to enforce it, and the greatest way to change an ordinance, if you don't like it, is to enforce it, because the more you enforce an ordinance, the more people will come out and say, I don't like this, and that might be a time when we bring that back and have to look at going longer or shorter, but Cape Canaveral's ultimately today grandfathered in to being able to regulate that. The other issues, so seven-day minimum, I think, is absolutely essential, so when I'm reading this ordinance, I'm looking for, you know, where we can get better at staying laser-focused on that. I do think the registration process allows us to do that. The other issue that we haven't really talked a lot about, which I think is just kind of a, there's no legislative need really on our side as a council, other than maybe having the registration, is making sure that these property owners who rent these short-term rentals have a business tax receipt, have a VTR. I mean, that's absolutely crucial, just like any business has a business tax receipt. I think we've seen some emails where there are some gaps in that process where property owners, they're renting their property out, they don't have a business tax receipt. The process to handle that is largely administrative, and I think that actually the software and the registration process will allow us to do that. I think this is always going to be an issue, no matter whether it's a home-based business or anyone. There's going to be residents in this community who occupy without a license. Some of them just truly don't know you need that license. Some of them are willfully doing it, but the end of the day, those two have my interest very much, the seven-day minimum and making sure that there's compliance on the business tax receipt. Um, have my interest very much, the seven day minimum and and making sure that there's compliance on the business tax receipt. The the rest of the issues, and since I've lived here, I've had. Short term rentals across every three hundred and sixty degrees for me. Um, within feet of my home, on the left, the right, across the street. And, um, I've dealt with the good, the bad and the ugly like all of us have. Um, there are, it from from my experience. Here, um, it comes down to to noise probably being the the biggest issue, the the quote unquote party houses, the late nights. Um, the, you know, so every once in a while I've I've seen trash, I've dealt with trash where there's littering happening, not not as big. And the other big one, uh, right up there with noise is parking, parking in the streets, uh, exceeding density. Uh, Cape Canaveral has an ordinance that does not allow parking in the streets. So with with those, um, noise, parking and trash, we heard from the community, and I tried to communicate this in the last meeting, that. We already have ordinances for that. We have a noise ordinance. We have, um. Parking ordinances in place, uh, in in the street. And, uh, obviously you can't be littering on other people's property. We've got the staff to enforce that. I would fully support. Um, whether it's a budget issue that we need more resources. Um, to address that, or whether it's just an administrative process improvement to to get a better handle on noise, parking and trash. Um, but I don't think that there is a a legislative need from the council to address those issues. Um, so it really comes back to the two, the seven day minimum and the business tax receipt. I think that the software is really just, uh, is a way that we're going to get a handle on that. And then within this ordinance, having that registration process. Uh, in in place. And so now, when you look at this proposed ordinance with that lens, we're really focused on two issues. I do think in general, and I I'm still open to listen to the public, that this, uh, ordinance goes too far. Uh, it it really takes. An approach that says, um, do I think it would be effective in addressing noise, parking, trash, seven day minimum? Oh, yeah, it would be very effective, but, um, it would also, on the other side of the sword. I think completely choke out a private property owner's ability to to go and use their property in a responsible way. Um, like any industry, it's sometimes the few ruin it for the all, and I think that's what we're dealing with here. And I don't, I think this ordinance has a far greater penalty. On the responsible property owners that that do rent out and abide by our ordinances responsibly. And if we do get a better handle on the seven day minimum. And making sure that they have business tax receipts, I think that that will. Indirectly, uh, take care of a lot of these other issues. Um, it's very difficult to rent your property out to a willing party for seven days. Um, personally speaking, I've maybe ten vacations. You know, I've only been on maybe one or two seven days. It's usually three to four, and I think that this community is largely seeing. Folks back when we had cruises, uh, come to this community for two to three days. I mean, on a Wednesday, Thursday, they hop on a cruise ship. But to think seven days, and it's not one week, our coordinate says seven days. And so if we are enforcing that. I think that that's where we will see a reduction in the noise, uh, trash and and parking violations. So, um, the. The ordinance, when we get into density, I I'm just happy to hear some of the positions that the planning and zoning board took on getting rid rid of the the background checks. Um, for sexual predators. Um, I think those, those are 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 going too far. The inspections, for example, I I don't, I don't think that that is is a good place for us to be. Um, that we received a very thorough and comprehensive letter, I think this entire council got it, from the Space Coast Realtors Association. I read that a couple of times, and they really put together a reasonable proposal. Um, with, uh, comparative policies to, uh, other municipalities throughout the country. Who've been able to tack tackle the same issues that we're dealing with within this community in a in a better way. And I would like to see us take the time to to review that and potentially have staff look at it. Uh, but the the big thing here is. That as of now, unless, you know, my mind changes, I'm not in support of this ordinance at the way it's written. Um, I do think it it does trample on private property rights. I've heard people say. Um, you want to protect the residential character of this community. I think we can do that. And then they will say, and I support private property rights, and then they'll throw a big but in there. And when I I I listen closely at their but, I support private property rights, but in the things that I hear every time are. Are issues where our ordinance already addresses it. And so we can't, in my opinion. Ethically and morally, uh, take away somebody's private property rights to to rent out their property responsibly for seven days. Um, this, I think, overburdens, uh, these property owners, uh, especially in a time. Of of COVID and need and people to use their properties to make income. It's important. But the the majority of the residential properties that I've seen that are renting them out are some of the most beautiful properties in this community, and we all benefit from that. And the thought that these are all business owners, I think we heard that in a public comment, is just not, uh, the case, uh, from. We can take one email, for example, one of the residents wrote, uh, this entire council and said. I have a home, I live in this city, and I also have a second home that I rent out in this city. And that second home allows him to have income, and his goal is to be able to move into that vacation rental and live permanently. By us imposing these ordinances, we're going to hurt his ability to do that. And so we do have residents that live here that have a second property in rental mount. My experience from them being three hundred and sixty degrees has been okay. The city manager, our city attorney and our deputies and code enforcement can tell you, I've had some really bad instances, but overall, we worked through it, we figured it out. And, uh, for that, I do have a few more comments, but nothing beyond what I've already said. I'd like to hear the rest of the council and try to get focused on the root problem, which is the seven day minimum, the B T Rs. And really giving our city manager the resources they need to better enforce noise, parking and trash. And for the record, the responses that I've got for those have been good from our sheriff's department. When we had those issues, they were very responsive in the in the in in my experience and from the community feedback. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, this has been a a very tough issue that yours. The sentiment on both sides has been, and that they have both sides with some very good arguments. I agree that with Councilman Morrison that maybe there's some way that through the budget. We can, I don't know, enforcement issues, that's something that we can do to help that. Ethically, I think it's the responsibility of the council to make sure that the residents in our city. And one of our number one priorities as a council person, I'll read it to you. I understand that my first priority as a council member will always be to look out for the best interests of the citizens of. In the public health, safety and welfare. Tough decisions sometimes have to be made. I agree that I agree with business rights, owners, ownership and all that. But I agree that these rules that we have or these, we're getting ready to vote on this ordinance. I don't think it's personally, I don't think it's too tough. I look at some of these things. And if I was a property owner that was going to rent my property out for a short term rental. I look at all these issues, I don't see a big issue that's going to affect me as far as business wise or my revenue stream that much. And I we're getting arguments that it's going to change the city dynamics, the. The businesses are going to be great greatly affected. I look at our city right now and see the growth, see possible growth. I see these rental properties and you have a vacant property in Cape Canaveral. And you put it up for sale, and I can personally speak for this. That property, if it's priced reasonably, it's going to be sold quick. I hate to see our, every time somebody puts a property up, that it's sold for the. The total reason that's being sold or being purchased is to make a short term rental. And when I had a property up for sale, that's one of the first things that people can. What is the stipulation at your, um, association? Can it be rented for short term? So these people that are buying these properties, they're not interested in the. Dynamics of our city are keeping it a bread and breakfast community, are keeping it a wholesome community. They're out to make their money. Now I'm going to reserve, and I'm staying open minded on this, but I like the proposal as written and. I'm staying open minded till I hear everybody speak, but I don't see any issues in there that would prevent me from. Um, voting otherwise or changing my mind right now, but I'm not, it it still can happen. Thank you.
I also have mixed feelings about this. I respect all of the vacation rental owners as well as our residents. And I think we do have a safety issue. We have to be concerned about the occupancy rule. And I think that's a real biggie for me. The other thing, I believe in home rule. And I think that local governments should be able to decide what is right based upon residents' feedback. And the residents here all speak. And I think we have people that have had some problems with some of the vacation rentals, not all. And some of the vacation rental owners are very meticulous about their property. They look great. Thank you very much. I'd like to say that. They do look great. However, I've been reading some materials about vacation rentals in general. And we have a very prime location here on the beach. We have one of the best beaches in Brevard County. And people really love it because it's not so crowded. We don't have the problems that are down on Minuteman and Cocoa Beach. And I think we don't have any commercial buildings along the beach, and I think that's another reason why. We have a nice, beautiful, quiet beach that's well maintained. My concern. Is that we will lose some of our residential feeling. And what I've been reading about, once you have. So many transients in an in an area. Sometimes services will go by the wayside, such as schools. And that's a concern because the school that we have here in Cape Canaveral is a very integral part of our society. And even those of us who are retired, we go to read at the school and do different types of community service projects there. Also, the church. And yes, that's a concern. We have several churches in Cape Canaveral and close to Cocoa Beach. And I worry about those things. Uh, we've seen significant decline during the pandemic, however. I worry about a lot of different services going by the wayside. Uh, again, home rule is important. In twenty eleven. We made the ordinance here in the city to have the seven day. Limit, and I think it's a good idea. You get people who want to take a family vacation. And they can afford to do a family vacation in a vacation rental. Yes, I understand it's a business and it's big money. I have my grandsons are staying up in Panama City. They go to school in Missouri State. It costs them three thousand four hundred to rent this house for the week. They have sixteen, seventeen, excuse me, seventeen. Young people that have rented this, and they did a half and half. The lower classmen at Missouri State took it for the first four days, and the other kids are taking it for the next three. So it's it's a lot of money, three thousand four hundred dollars. I think it came to whatever for each child. Anyway, their parents could afford it, I guess. I thought it was a little extravagant. My point is. That at least it's a seven day rental. Hopefully the kids will behave, but kids are kids. They want to have fun. I want to have fun too, and I had a good time growing up. And when I went to college, I never got to go to Florida though. I was on a strict budget. So what I'm saying is. I think that the seven day should stay. I agree with Wes Morrison about the. I think this is a little too meaty. I think that, um, it could be simplified in many ways. And I think that. To make it easier, I think an easier type of ordinance, smoother. But I do think we do need to have a company that could help us out with the software to regulate. And I think that's necessary. Of course, some of the things that P N Z, thank you very much, P N Z, I did listen. I didn't speak, but I did listen to the entire meeting. And, um, I did hear everybody's thoughts and opinions and, uh, I think. I think we will make a good decision. I think that we're all working very hard. We want to make an equitable decision. But for the residents of Cape Canaveral. Thank you.
Um, well, I've been to all the meetings. I've listened. I've, uh. You know, got the emails that everybody else has gotten. Um, I believe that, you know, the short term rentals have their place in our city. But, you know, as a council person, I represent the citizens here. As well as the business owners that own these houses. My, one of my concerns is, excuse me, uh, like, uh. Mayor Pro Tim said, you know, if we all, if every house goes to short term rental, what happens to our schools? What happens to the kids on the baseball field? What happens to the multi generation center that we're spending money on? Is if it's all going to be short term rentals, what about the residents? And, you know, I represent them too, and, you know, in our city, we also have an affordable housing problem. Um, and I'm talking about, you know, like my son. And even the people that work here can't afford to buy a house in Cape Canaveral. Which is good for the homeowners. It makes the property value go up, but it's so high now because. Investors are coming in and buying it and changing it in to a short term rental. Um, you know. Um, our commander had said before. People in our city need to have skin in the game to make it a residential feel, a safe place. Uh, I just got an email, um, this week. I don't know if everyone else got it about a. A six passenger golf cart doing donuts from one of these vacation rental places. On the dunes that we just planted sea oats on. So that's, I mean, that's people that don't care about our city, and that's what is my concern. I think that we need to find a happy medium. I I don't see, you know, these ordinances or these different things in the ordinance. How, if you're a good actor and a good per, uh, good renter, this should not. Affect you. It gives us the city the the way to, um. Take care of the ones that aren't doing the right things. If you open a business in Cape Canaveral. Um, you have all these different things you need to do. If you open a restaurant in Cape Canaveral, you have to have an inspection. From the fire department. I think if if these places are being a business. That they should have to do the same things as a small business. Otherwise, uh, you know, a different small business in our city. Um, I'm not opposed to them. I think that the residents in the city are happy or can live with the seven day minimum. Which has been on the books since the eighties and the owners out there, how many can? Can they admit that they rented for less than seven days? Um, I think the annual inspection is good. I'm I'm real happy with the changes that the planning and zoning. Um. Board recommended. Uh, I think that was a little going too far. But, you know, I just think that we have to find, and I I know it's important to all of us up here to find a way. That we all can live together and and, um, keep our small town feel. And keep our houses affordable for families that want to raise their kids here. Um. We have the Catholic Church, the other churches, the school, the playgrounds. We're spending a lot of money on this multi generation center. And if all it is in the city is short term rentals, you know, who's going to go to the yoga classes? Um, I just, I I'm hoping that I'm, you know, anxious to hear from the, um. The residents, we've heard a lot. Um, you know, hometown rule is very. Um, you know, hometown rule is very important, which I stressed at the meeting that I had, which a lot of you attended. Um, but I just hope that we can find a way that we can all live with this. Um, cohesively and uh, make everybody happy. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I have a few things that I have. First of all, I uh, I don't oppose Airbnbs. I don't oppose them at all. I've been through many long days of this process before years ago, so. I support them. I think they're a good thing for the city, but they have to be done in such a fashion that they're good. And we do have some that aren't, in my opinion, good. Leaving all that to the side, I, I uh, I agree with a lot that we have been, had in this ordinance. That we kept a lot of it that we got rid of. I didn't agree with to start with. Wait until the last reading to get everybody's opinion. And I, I think that we did away with proper things that needed to be done with, done away with through that P and Z hearing. But there are certain things in there that was kept in there that I do have uh, still an issue with. The uh, the three logs or the three year log, I had an issue with that by keeping a, a log on all the occupants and the unit numbers and whatever. I can, I can see where that's a lot of bookkeeping, but I don't have a problem with the people reporting. Uh, what their occupancy was for that year for whatever date they had. But to keep a lot of books for each unit to me was not a proper thing. And the other annual inspection, I agree with those fully because when we went through this issue back in the early eighties. That was one of the things that I supported it on that the daily rental or the transient rentals or what we used to call them. The Airbnb's we're referred to. I supported them only on the fact that they had to do the same thing that the hotel people had to go through. Because the hotel people got into agreements with the city and didn't fight it anymore as long as they lived by the same law. So I supported for that reason back then, and I'll still support it for that same reason. I believe in inspections for the safety of the people that come in there because they're, they're, they're not familiar with that unit. Like you walk into a, a hotel room, you kind of just check where my exit, where's the nearest elevator. You, you look at those type of things. So I, I, I looked at the uh, the bookings, the annual inspection. Yeah, I'm in favor of keeping those in here. And then my biggest issue is the occupancy. I have a very big issue with this occupancy, the way it's laid out. We build certain things in, in the, in the state of Florida, not only in the city. They're on, they're, they're built under the Florida billing codes. We can make all the rules we want, but they better not interfere with the Florida billing code. Because that's the bible of the construction industry. And I'm not in favor of this occupancy at all, the way it's written. I think it needs to adhere to whatever the Florida billing code allows in that unit. And that's what I would support. Otherwise, I won't support daily rentals. I always have supported them. I've been a big proponent of them. I lost a lot of friends over this issue a long time ago. But I think when we, we make an ordinance, it should apply to all of the laws, not just certain things. Well, I want to do this. I want to do that. And then let's break the law of the Florida billing codes. I discussed this with our city manager and I, I felt that and I still feel the same. But you bring too many occupants into a, a unit. And it's not equipped with enough escape means if there was an emergency. There's going to be some bad, bad things happening. And uh, I'm sure, that's our, our chief of management and I'm sure we might hear from him on this too. I don't know, but uh. That's my feelings on this thing. I'll support it if those issues are in there that way. Otherwise, I won't support the Airbnbs anymore. I think we need to protect the people that are coming to these things. The seven day rentals, I support that. I still support it. The occupancy, I will support if it's correct. And the occupancy will also correct a lot of other problems that are created such as too many cars parking on the street, parking in the yard, parking on unpaved areas. They violate all those laws of the city. So if we get into the occupancy factor under the Florida billing code and the Florida fire codes. I think we'll create a lot of problems that we, that we have had. And basically I support them, but I would like to see these laws appear to. Otherwise, I, I take a round, a round, rather round effect on them. And I heard about a, a golf cart doing donuts on this, you know, this type of stuff is what creates problems when you get a lot of people into one unit like that. And golf carts aren't allowed on the streets to start with, so there's another law that's being broken with these things. And I'm sure that gentleman over there would sure like to find that golf cart, so. I uh, I, I believe in, I believe in enforcing the law and I believe living by the law. I try not to break the laws. I don't, I might, I don't know. I'm not perfect, but I just think that we all live here. I've lived here for sixty-five years. This is my home. I live right in the midst of all these things too. They don't bother me, but it does bother me when I see the people that I know are from there breaking the law and doing things that they shouldn't be doing. And then we hear, well, everybody's running their place. It's perfect. Well, it's not. It's not perfect because I, but I visually see it and I get complaints about them, so. I don't uh, go out and pound a bush and try to find somebody breaking the law, but I see it. But my, my feelings are is we do the Florida building code and the Florida fire code occupancy. They're inspected by the fire department once a year for safety reasons. And the uh, books are kept like I say for just how many occupants you had in that unit. But um. This is uh, this has been an ongoing thing for years and I don't think there's really a hundred percent of answer to it. But we can at least work with the people that live here and we can work with the people that want these here as a business. A lot of people that own them don't even live here, so. My feeling is I'll, I'll still support them, but I think we're going to have to have that in there as law. Otherwise, I, I won't support it. That's all I have to say.
I will go into public hearing unless council holds anything else.
I, Mr. Mayor, I got one clarity. The fire inspections was a common theme, I think, for us tonight. Um, if they get their, is there no fire inspection process through the Department of Business and Professional Regulations at the state level? So they're already getting an inspection?
They're already doing the inspection.
Right.
Um, as you said, right now we're getting bartered with uh, sixty-five waiting. So we do, whether you pass the inspection or not, we're obligated by law to inspect them so they get their license. When you pass it, whether you pass the occupancy load or not, however you do it, we're still obliga- obligated to tell that company they can actually cover. Buy the square footage, but our safety, depending if it's a single family home or depending if it's an apartment building. And if they buy a residential home and they convert it to transient living, state calls them. The RPO, whatever you guys have called it, but it's called transient in our code. And they have to meet those codes. And they have to meet the due code to buy existing residents and convert it to transient.
Got it. Thank you. So, and that, that's kind of the point that I want to make is. To, the mayor brings a valid points on this. These laws are already in place. And, and unless I'm missing something, that why are we going through and, and doing this when he's already. Chief Sergeant's already got a backlog of these, um, these inspections to make sure that they're safe. And I think that we talk about home rule. The state has not, the state isn't, has these statutes in place already. And it's our job to work with our resources to help um, en- enforce them. But the state hasn't taken our home rule away to, to do this. In fact, it's law. They haven't taken away our home rule to regulate noise. They haven't taken away our home rule to regulate people on the sand dunes. They haven't taken away our home rule to enforce street parking. We have home rule. And in, in fire ballot issues, it sounds like we don't need extra words here in language to support it if we've already got that in place.
They have taken away home rule, but we are obligated to enforce the state part of it. We can't make our own code.
Okay, so with this conflict?
Okay, Chief, I'm sorry. When the mayor talks about the Florida building code, is the Florida for the layperson, is the Florida building code more stricter than what we have in place for the vacation rentals or we're proposing? Or is it um?
So even if we met today on that, we're basing that. In stricter code, the way it works in the state of Florida, building code and the fire code have a problem with each other, then you have to go with the strictest code. But ours is um, a hundred and fifty square feet in a single family home per person. And it is two hundred feet if they're uh, for square foot per person, it's in an apartment, uh, complex or multi-family.
Right.
So, and that is, that's actually a state statute, it's a rule sixty-nine A, sixty-nine four A. That's what we go by when we go and inspect.
Chief, is that an overall occupancy or a sleeping occupancy?
That's overall.
Thank you.
And, and real quick, Chief, as the fire chief, you've got enough on your hands right now beside having to go and pick up additional work in the city as far as vacation rentals. Just almost seem like somebody.
They're not really going to pick up additional work. We're just going to know those ones that haven't been properly licensed. We, we're going to get more inspections.
Right.
We're, we're going to get behind it, work that out, and I'll, I'll do that. To say annually that we have to do it at that number of persons. In some of these places, they're four hundred square feet. They're required to smoke detector, make signature, proper address and everything on it. So somebody inside the building, send a call line upon it, where, see where they are, their address codes and stuff like that. But those things are already in place and, and most of the ones that have been in place for years and years and years, they don't have a problem with that. But ones, some of the ones that you guys are talking about, we don't have a problem with either. So we don't have a problem with it.
Thank you.
When you do the inspection, is, is there a, a number of occupancy level posted in these places?
So we don't normally do that. We certainly can require occupancy posted. Uh, but we normally just do that in the regular businesses. Don't get me wrong, state does, but for us, it's really enforce that occupancy. That's, that's all, that's only owner of that, that particular facility. Or if you guys come up with something, you're code enforcing people doing. That when, when it's a business occupancy, um, like the Brads, and they have a twelve hundred. And, and we go out to do an inspection, we get fourteen hundred. We go to Brads Management. They hand over any of the people out there. We go to the Brads Management a second time. Management is fine. Not the people staying there. That would be, for us, that would be difficult. We're not going to be able to go there because there's fifteen people staying there. Tell them, believe me, we don't have that authority. Nor do, nor can we act on a complaint, cite somebody because they left fifteen people there. If somebody said so. Magistrate's going to laugh ass. Of course you're prudent. If it's, it's self police. Commander here has authority to do anything.
And if I can jump in there, Mayor, I, but I think that parking and noise is one of the symptoms that drives why we want occupancy. And so if we focus on the problems, I know I hear an example of, Mayor, I think you shared, which scary thought, you know. That you get too many people in a unit and it catches on fire. You got a bad situation. No, I don't know statistically if that's ever happened in Cape Canaveral. Could it? Yes, but I think if there is um. If these are likely things that happen, um, I think our fire department's well positioned within a two square mile city to probably one of the most responsive. Fire and police departments in the country. Um, and so that one is, I, I don't see that. As being a historical problem unless I'm wrong where people were due to over occupancy, unable to escape. But the problems are noise, you know, parking issues that, that I think our, our deputies can, can handle. So it, and, and my question back to Chief Sergeant is, would this be, this would increase your workload if I understand. But. Due to state statute, we've already got, I think, a mechanism in place to, to address having a safe structure, essentially.
Yes. It's the first inspection, obviously, because you walk into a place with fifteen beds, so they don't have a problem, right? Or you walk into a place that's fairly renovated without permit and just now changed it into a transient living facility. And they didn't meet the code requirements, showing that.
And, and so, and I think Department of DBPR, so let's think, upon your annual, and this might have been where the proposal came was. Well, if you don't do it annually, over time, they'll keep adding more beds and stuff. And so I get that. However, um, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, if there is a complaint to the Department of Business and Professional Regulations. Say your neighbor, and I read this in the letter from the Realtors Association, that if there's a complaint, you file it through the Department of Business for Professional Regulations. Then you have the ability to go in and inspect.
Yeah, yeah, we have the ability to go and inspect. They have their license period.
At any time.
But typically, but if there is a complaint filed, then DBPR contacts the local fire, whoever it is, we spoke to feature here.
Okay, so we, we kind of can eliminate that. Instead of doing it annually, you know, let's kind of let people have their. Their space and, and use our resources more efficiently. But when you start to see, oh my gosh, how many people are in that house? That's an appropriate time to maybe question and complain and um, I think that makes a lot more sense.
We will, we will try to. Say fifteen, sixteen.
Okay. Okay.
Say, got it.
That'll create resentment in the community and, yep, understand. Thank you. That's all I had.
Mr. Moore, do you want to say something?
I, I just think on that last point, um, in the proposed ordinance, what we've written is inspections are on an annual basis or as needed to address code compliance issues. So that's an or statement. And, and part of the reason it was written that way is because as Chief Sergeant says, there are some technical difficulties, logistical difficulties in scheduling. A ton of inspections every year. So we've got some flexibility built into the inspection part of this code already.
But just, but what's the value in us restating what's already a state statute? My question.
Well, there are other things than um, the fire code that would be inspected for perhaps. Um, there might be um, a balcony railing is loose or something that's a safety issue. That's a, you know, a Florida building code issue as, on an as needed basis. Something could come up. Maybe we get a complaint from a tenant or uh, the registration company for just a, a comment that a user made that. There's this, you know, condition out there. I don't know what it is, but it trips the requirement. We should go take a look at that.
Right, but the complaints we are getting aren't that people are falling off balconies due to unsafe structures. That people are catching on fire in their buildings. The complaints are seven day minimums. And so that's the whole point and I'm. that people are catching on fire in their buildings. The complaints are seven-day minimums. And so that's the whole point, and I'm trying to drive that home, is we are talking about issues that, yes, could happen, but I think they're a bit of a red herring. And I think that the process today, we got to focus on the problems. And the problems are seven-day minimums and making sure that everyone has a registered BTR. So um I don't want to go on these mission creeps where we start talking about these situations that really statistically aren't happening in the city. Again, could they? Yes. But if we if we address policy in that approach, our ordinances are going to be this thick. And you know, it's we're not a a think tank to think up of every possible scenario. It's, I think, being practical about it. So, thank you.
I go around, I I don't do it that much anymore because I'm kind of retired out of the business. But, Ms. Morrison, if you would go around sometimes and see some of the things that you see, in the, not particularly, I don't know if they're Airbnbs, but I know they're rentals. See some of the things I see. You wouldn't be making those statements.
What what, can you share one example?
Hazard, people doing things themselves. Uh I don't know if it's a tenant, I don't know if it's the owner, I don't know if it was another contractor. I don't know, but I see things that I wouldn't sleep in the end.
In unsafe, something that's out of code?
Well, I'm, well, you're you're asking for not having mandatory inspections.
No, I mean, I I'm just trying to listen to, what's an example of something that keeps, I I drive and walk this city almost daily.
I had my pictures on my phone of one, I took of a rental unit I wanted to, the guy had it rewired, and it was all extension cords plugged into each other, it was feeding all the outlets in the kitchen. The refrigerator was plugged into a multi-script that had about eight other things that was just rewired. It was a rental unit. I won't say where, I won't say.
And those homeowners.
Those are things, well, these are things that you see every day out there that require those guys' eyes.
I I I I think that we have a permitting process that requires inspections.
Well, that's not, these aren't, they're not even permitted. It couldn't be permitted in this.
I know, but you're always going to have rule breakers, but to say that rule breakers are largely short-term rental owners.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that. I didn't say that. I know rental units that I think are a lot of different, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know who all short-term, I don't know who all that.
Right, but I think.
I'm just telling you, there's reasons for those people to be making inspections.
I am not against those people making inspections. I think we already have a process for that.
I just wanted to clarify what you kind of said, it wasn't really necessary to think, but I think it's necessary. That's why I I support law. I support law. And the law is, the state law is, they will be inspected.
And I'm not pushing you against that. I'm just saying that if somebody wants to do any electrical, they have to get an electrical.
No, I'm not only saying, I have plumbing, I've seen it all, air conditioner, I see air conditioners going every day without permission.
We already have ordinances for that.
I understand.
And this isn't too kicking on short-term rental owners and sending them through a burdensome process that you're not requiring from everyone.
They rent just like a hotel. The hotel has to do it every year. It's mandated. And they should be mandated because when we made this agreement with those people that had, they agreed to that fact.
They, we just heard from Chief Sergeant that they are, they are getting, my my thing is, it's already state statute. Why are we going to another level?
We got a lot of things in ordinance that are state statute, but.
Right.
There's a lot of things in here that I agree don't need to be there.
No, I think we, we're in full agreement here. I I I'm just saying we're being a bit redundant.
No, but you just, we're disagreeing with the yearly run, or yearly inspection. I don't think so. I think it needs to be done. It's part of the, it's part of the law, and that's the law. Okay, we're going to move on, huh? I said what I want to say. I'm not going to say no more about it. Anybody else want to say? We'll move to the, we'll move to public.
No, I'm ready to hear.
Yeah, okay. First card I had was Mrs. Weeks. Good name, please, and where you reside?
Hi, I'm Tricia Weeks, I'm the twenty twenty one president of Space Coast Association of Realtors. And Wes, thank you so much for reading the letter that we sent you. Um and we are here on behalf of the private property rights. Uh we feel that people should be able to do with their private property what they want. Um we want all rentals treated equally, not just, um if you're going to put these rules in place, should it just be for vacation rentals? It should be for all rentals. You've already stated, you don't know whether that was a vacation rental or what, which is the premise behind the state. Uh currently, it is working its way through. And it's not to take away home rule, but it's to, again, make everybody treated equally. Even the League of Cities has dropped their objection to the state bill. Um they did that a few days ago. So we believe that um I I want to say not all homes in Cape Canaveral are being sold as vacation rentals. I just had some realtor painting here from uh Seattle, and she's bought a condo in Cape Canaveral, uh because she wants to live here and live near the beach. So not a vacation rental, there are many people who are moving here for other reasons. Um the part of the ordinance that you're passing, the undue burden on property managers and how that has to be transferred, uh that is um somebody having to be on call twenty-four seven, and then how if you are not available, how do you transfer that to somebody else, uh having to come down here, pay a fee. And if somebody's in a car accident or in a hospital and can't be gotten, that they can't easily transfer that to somebody else. That is um something that we are against as well. Um just as an FYI, average daily rate of people who come here in vacation rentals, fifty-two hundred bucks a day, and the average per person per trip is nine hundred and fifty dollars that they spend. So that's a lot of money coming. Oh, I'm sorry, get closer to the mic. And I have such a loud voice, too. Um anyway, uh so people coming here, spending that money, and uh that you will li- uh miss out on if uh if you make it so burdensome that they go away. Uh the issue seems to be the noise and that can be handled with the nuisance ordinance. You already have everything in place that you need. Uh more rules and regulations is not always the answer. Enforce what you've already got. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Stephanie Tripp.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to thank you very much for this time. My name is Stephanie Tripp. I am a resident. I own a home here in Cape Canaveral. And I am just speaking on behalf of the citizens and residents of Cape Canaveral. We've spoken to very, very many of our neighbors, and I just wanted to express to you their thoughts and their feelings, and also how much I appreciate all of the thoughts and feelings that have been presented tonight. Um first of, first of all, I just want to add that we strongly support the ordinance ten twenty twenty-one regarding the short-term rental properties, Airbnbs, in the city of Cape Canaveral. The rental inventory has increased one hundred and thirty percent, one hundred and thirty-six percent in the past year. Currently, there are four hundred short-term rentals in Cape Canaveral, and this is in a town of only two-point-seven square miles. We understand the value of the short-term rentals, what what the value of the short-term rentals are bringing to our community, as well as the issues we've already discussed relating to parking, traffic, safety, even the impact of what's happening on our beaches. We love our community. We appreciate the our visitors, the tourists that are coming into our city. However, we realize there has to be limits. We are strongly opposed to the daily rental, and we feel that the occupancy issue should be very strongly addressed and enforced. And especially in regards to our neighbors, they have to be respectful of the residents that own their properties. These are family residences. This is a family neighborhood. And our residents do not want a hotel next door. So again, we do support the existing ordinance as it's been presented. We appreciate all the support that we, I I've heard for this evening. We strongly oppose the daily rentals, the limit and the unlimited occupancy issues. But one thing other I'd like to add is the fact that regardless of what the ordinance is, it has absolutely no value unless it can be strongly enforced. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lamar, Lamar Russell.
Good evening. Lamar Russell, Harbor Heights. I'd like to just offer you some facts to think about as you're voting for this ordinance. I support the ordinance, by the way, it worked really hard to get it to where it is. I won't say it's perfect, but I think we ought to drive it around a while, and we can change it later if we have to. But it's a good start, and I recommend it. Fact that I'm free for me here with is we have about four hundred vacation rentals, four more in town. If you divide that by a hundred and fifty units of hotel, you just had added two-point-six hotels to the town. Two-point-six hotels to the town. Now, a neighborhood in that zone is defined by usage. Residential is residential use, residential, residential use, and so our neighbors, our neighborhoods are becoming invisibly zoned. There's no planning, there's no zoning regulations. Become used by lots and lots of vacation rentals. I've got three within Hollywood units, Hollywood district to my house. And that new usage, you got a new usage zone. You just don't go again. It's called vacation residential. That's where hotel businesses operated in a residential zone without having been zoned or giving permission to operate the business until they get the license. And they're given permission if they get their license, talk about that, etc. Then they're in business. Now you've rezoned your neighborhood invisibly. And it's called vacation residential. And my neighborhood is becoming rapidly vacation residential zone. You know, when they uh, we went through the registration process in the zoning draft, let's go through the documents that we asked the initial guy to fill out. A registration form, payment of applicable taxes, current active, active licenses, a public lodging as established with the Florida Department of Business and Professional Regulations, current active certification of restoration, registration with the Florida State Department of Assembly. Tax receipt. Yeah, continue a few minutes, a few seconds. It will be long, almost there. And then you got to fill out the current business tax receipt, submit that. And you got to submit evidence of a rentals activated, active account with the tax collector, our county tax collector. And then you got to show evidence that you collected the tourist development tax. And then you got to show an external site deck drawing that shows parking pools and those items that would cause our chief to look for safety items. But those are seven significant uh documents. My question to you and council, are you going to hire somebody to look at all this paperwork? Four hundred units. Times seven documents. Times about a day for each set of documents. That's a pretty good personnel load. Now, I don't think you have personnel in place to do it. The uh do it, my question is, who performs that office administration task? I don't think the answer's in this room yet. And my advice is to charge enough, you know, these licenses to cover. Hire the people you need, do this, have the salary that the city needs, make sure the taxes are collected and paid, and 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 cover the cost. There are oceans of money washing into this town in vacation rentals. Don't be bashful about asking for it, licenses. They've got it. They're whining about it, but they've got it. All you got to do is sit sitting on my front porch and watch your money pour through that house. So unless you hire and identify people who have administration, inspections, trolls, driving bys, you got nothing. You got a piece of paper called an ordinance, you got nothing unless you can force it. Cover your costs. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Uh Larry, Larry Guest. Yeah. Just don't repeat what he said, and you probably won't be three minutes. You go sit down.
My name is Larry Guest. I'm a author, journalist, retired, and I own a a unit at uh Sand Dunes, which is a somewhat upscale condo. Uh I talked to one of your staff members today, and he told me about this ordinance and said, what it boils down to is that some people abuse this seven-day rental, and they only rent for three days, or they bring a whole gang of them, and they throw stuff on your yard. And I agree that you say that that what this ordinance does is put more burden on the responsible people, not the ones who come and throw a party and raise hell. I uh I I think that if you pass this questionable ordinance, uh you'll be hurting the people who are responsible. Responsible people, in my mind, after living here for eight years, loving Cape Canaveral and the Space Coast, is that if if you're in a condo that requires a thirty-day minimum rental, then that that's where I think the line of demarcation starts, that that uh if they let you rent for three days or seven days or six days, then you get a different clientele. At Sand Dunes, we have mostly mature couples, very few children, uh virtually no children, grandchildren come over to visit for a day or two, that's about it. But uh uh some of, not many of the units are available for short-term or any kind of rental in our condo. Uh I'm one of them because I need the money to to make ends meet. But uh what this guy told me today was that uh to enforce this, that you're thinking about making all of us who are willing to rent to snowbirds for two or three months every winter uh would be required to register as somebody who makes their unit available. Uh and do that every year at a hundred and fifty dollars or so. I understand that that may haven't been nailed down yet. But that, that's just going to be added to the rental price. I mean, I'm not going to pay that. I'm not paying a hundred and fifty dollars to the, to the rental price. And and if, if uh, and what happens if Cocoa Beach and Satellite Beach get the same idea, and they all start digging into this trough of money they can get for registration? Four seconds. But I'm uh I propose that you exempt major condos who require thirty-day uh rental. I'm, I'm a little niff that that I would have to pay a hundred and fifty dollars or whatever every year just to, in a condo where you got to rent for thirty days or more. Uh and and that's been very well uh supported by our, our, our. And, and that's been very well supported by our, our board. What I'm afraid of is the slipper slope that I see with something like this. You've got, we're already nailing the snowbird for twelve percent interest. And, and I may put the hundred and fifty right on top of it, if you do that enough. And now this great, you've been here ninety five years, we've seen this grow into enormous tourism.
You misunderstood me, I thought.
A sack of money that was I wrong on the number of years.
Every night.
Now, if you do that and it spreads to other cities and, and prices keep going up because of this annual registration fee, then if I'm a, if I'm a snowbird up there someplace, I'm gonna soon develop a feeling that, well, they probably go to New Smyrna Beach.
Sir, I'm gonna have to ask you to kind of finish up if you would.
Okay.
You've already.
Well, that's it, I mean, they bring a lot of money, these people.
I understand.
They're, they're quality people to be able to pay to stay in a condo that requires a thirty day run. So that's, that's it, thank you. How many years was it, sixty five?
Pardon? Sorry?
Oh.
But then there's sixty five, not ninety five. Mayor.
I'm gonna ask a question about the hundred and fifty dollar fee that he was speaking of, where did that come from?
We have, we have not established a fee yet. What he, what he said was that you heard from a staff member that there will be a fee, it may be a hundred and fifty dollars. We haven't nailed that down yet.
For condo.
For registration.
V T dollars.
No, for, for this registration, for this ordinance.
Well, yeah, I understand what I'm saying, but not for the people that just rent? We're not talking about somebody that's got a condo, comes out there six months and then want to rent it out to, to a friend for two months and then.
But Mr., yeah, Ms. Mayor, this ordinance only applies to vacation rentals.
Just vacation rentals.
So if you own a condominium and you're renting out the condominium unit for more than thirty days at a time, you're not going to be considered a transient public lodging establishment and therefore you're not a vacation rental under this ordinance.
I understand that, because I think people don't understand that.
Yeah, this gentleman would, if he's, if he's renting his property out for at least thirty days at a time, would not fall under this ordinance.
But I don't think he said that.
Well, he's saying that if, he's, he's worried that it applies to him and he, he alluded to renting a condo unit for thirty days or more, this ordinance doesn't apply to that situation.
You understand that, sir?
The ordinance, no, no, the ordinance would, the registration requirement would not apply to him.
Somebody didn't tell them that, you know.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to articulate that for the record, so maybe, you know, he, he understands that.
That's why I have a question to make sure it got clarified.
You're right, Mayor, you, you were on it.
You, you don't have to worry, sir, unless you get a B R B to be a, a daily rental or a transient rental or whatever. You're, you're okay. No, no, sir, thank you, go. That's why I was asking you to record up so I could find out before I got to. You're okay, enjoy your stay, thank you. Thanks. Alexandra Hodgson, or I don't, is it H O D?
H O D.
Okay, I didn't know if it was an N or an H.
So I'm Alexandra Hodgson, I'm with Three Max Aerospace, so I'm a realtor. So I just wanted to say that we're talking about a very small group of people. So if we have four hundred vacation rentals in Cape Canaveral, if you work out how many are actually doing a week or less? So we've got four hundred, maybe two hundred are only renting monthly, maybe fifty are renting less than seven days. So maybe what you need to do is instead of doing this whole production, when you register your property or rental, you say to them, are you going to rent six months or above? Thirty, thirty days or above, two weeks or above, a week or above, or three days or above? And then you come up with a rate of how you're going to bill these people and how they're going to get your taxes. Because basically this is what we're talking about, is your revenue. So if I am renting three days at a time and you say to me, okay, your rate for the year is going to be fifteen hundred dollars. I'm going to rent weekly, your rate is a thousand dollars. I'm going to rent monthly, your rate is five hundred dollars. I'm going to rent ninety days, a hundred and eighty days, your rate is this. I'm gonna rent six months above, your rate is this. If you're going to rent yearly, a lot of this, what you're talking about is stuff that happens on a yearly basis. So I have a bunch of people that I rent to or have properties or clients, they rent yearly. Their properties are very badly protected. They are awful, believe it or not, they're awful. When we have a vacation rental, their properties are pristine because they absolutely look bad. They maintain their yards, they maintain their roofs, they paint, they, they groom their lawns, they chop down the trees that are dying, they put up the hurricane shutters. They look after these properties daily, weekly, monthly. Yearly, people do not. And so when you're talking about people putting in extension calls and extension calls and extension calls, these are typically people that are renting yearly, they're not renting short term.
I didn't say they were, I just indicated it, I see a lot of unsafe things. Making my point that the fire inspections need to be made regardless of who you are, what you are, or what you do, that's what my point was.
An additional thing is that maybe when you do a liquor license and a beer and wine license, you decide as a city, we're only going to give fifty liquor licenses or ten licenses. What do you decide? And maybe you have to decide that we're only going to give fifty short term rentals. Anything less than a week, we're just going to give fifty out for the, the whole pay down. And then you pay for it, you pay extra. Maybe that's something that we need to look into because it's not the norm. We don't, many, many, many people do not rent less than a week. And you're looking at maybe fifty, fifty units. And so for you to change the law for fifty units is crazy.
Okay, we, we appreciate your comments, but I've seen a lot and I have my opinion about, about it. Totally different from what you speak. This was.
Mayor, can I just state for the record that this ordinance is only talking about registering those rentals that meet the definition of transient public lodging establishment? Means if you're renting for six months, you don't meet the definition. If you're renting for thirty days, you don't meet the definition. However, you cannot, you already cannot rent for less than seven days in the city of Cape Canaveral. That's just not a category that we could allow. So it's narrowly tailored to that definition, transient lodging. That's the only thing we're talking about creating a registration program for.
I wonder if I'd understand.
We currently have none registered under this because this is not law right now. Are you referring to business tax receipts? Okay, that, that's another matter.
This is Tammy Watts, was it? I'm Tammy Watts from the Government Affairs Section of Space Coast Association Realtors. First of all, as I said the last time we saw each other, thank you very much, Mayor and council members, for dedicating so much time to this. I know I have personally as well, and I've watched, I've read at every single meeting you guys' patterns, so thank you, we appreciate that. As it is now, the Space Coast Association Realtors opposes how this bill is written, or excuse me, how the ordinance is written. As we are in favor of private property rights for everybody, whether you rent out your home or you reside here, we do feel that it's proper, that it is possible to structure this ordinance to less satisfy everybody. And as you know, I've sent you the letter from our president that stated on there about the kind of nuisance ordinance. There's examples on there how that thing was done, of cities who successfully done that property. And we target, on that one, you target everybody, we target owners. An example was actually made that the wiring, for example, at one location was so bad, however, that was a renter, for example, wasn't even vacation renters. That is people's property that they go ahead and serve business. Those locations are usually far more taken care of than other places. But that just shows an example of how every place needs to be treated equally, whether it's the electrical there. I'm hearing a lot of things about what ifs. What if there's a fire, or what if there's issues with churches, or what if a balcony is? Maybe we could go on the other end of it and think about, wow, what if more people are employed here? Because they're hiring more people, because people are coming here and spending money to take your restaurants, your bars, or any other place. There's a what if on each side. To sit there and put the blame on property owners that rent things out instead of everybody and pick and choose is just bad public policy. Treat everybody equally with those. Thank you very much, we appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you. All right, I have no more cards from the audience. You need to fill out a card, please.
Mr. Mayor, on that note, may I please request a five minute recess?
We're gonna do it, because that just laid out. Get into the other issue before we do.
Thank you.
Let's hurry this lady, we'll, we'll finish with public participation at eight o'clock, we'll go.
Okay.
We already stated that, so.
I, can I just make a quick comment?
Just give it to the sergeant, Roger.
I just wanted to make a quick comment, just about vacation rentals in general. That it's, vacation rentals in general, it's a hot topic. It's one that we talk about at Space Coast League of Cities every single meeting, monthly. And I know that the advocacy committee is really working hard on this, working with the House bill that's going forward, and I understand that there's been some language change that they have amended. I think it's H B five twenty-two, and that it's, yeah, they, they, so everyone's working on this and the vacation rental problem along our beach side is, everyone, every city and municipality is focused on it. I know that they're working on it in Satellite Beach, Cocoa Beach, Indian Harbor Beach, Melbourne Beach. Where?
Okay, let's not get into a discussion with the audience.
No, no, I just wanted to make a comment, that's it.
It's over with.
Go on.
I'm sorry, I did miss you, sir, I picked it up inadvertently and put it in, Mr. Rivera.
I'd like to thank you all for your time, you spending here with us, and thank you for hearing us out. One thing this gentleman brought up was this hundred and fifty dollar fine, whereas I don't see anything on here that's supposed to inform anybody that any fees, additional fees are going to be levied out of this, especially specific ones. Another thing is, people just seem to think we're raking in all this cash. And while it, while it is true that the revenue source is there when people come here, a lot of that money goes right out the door for maintenance upkeep. And every time you think you're gonna have a good week, all of a sudden plumbing issues pop up, you have to have your plumber over. I have a plumber at one of my places right now, which is effectively wiping out the entire state of the people there. So, you know, I want you to keep in mind, we're not just a cash cow for y'all and don't want it to be looked at like that. Too many more fees and levies and rules and regulations, burdens will make me wrap up my business here and go elsewhere, focus on other areas. That's all I'm gonna say, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All righty, item number four, I have one more card, I just got turned in, Victoria, I can't read the last name, Victoria's some. Chistovia or something like.
What do I say, my neighbor, so it's.
I'm sorry?
Did I just start talking, I don't know.
Just put, state your name and where you live, please.
Okay, Cape Canaveral, Victoria Chistovia. So I want to say I agree about the schools because part of the attraction to the area for people who want to actually live here is a good school zone next to a beach, so it makes really great people come and live and stay in the area. So I do agree having a lot of short term rentals will cut whatever the funds for schools and the short staff, right? So then the schools will not be such a good school zone. And so to keep those people, I suggest that maybe you should offer permanent residence, a tax deduction to make it more attractive for them to, to be here and raise their children here. Besides that, I don't see how else you would keep the children in the school because they're being priced out of the neighborhood. I don't know, does that make sense? So, yeah, because if it's not a good school zone, then I don't think it's a good area for return. And then once, let's just say, the economy goes downwards, all the tourists leave, the short term rentals stop and the whole neighborhood collapses, I've seen that happen in other neighborhoods. So then we're left with nothing, literally, and that's not good. It destroys the whole neighborhood. And then even for people who do short term rentals, I don't even want to own this neighborhood if it's destroyed or that. So it's not even beneficial to me. So there has to be a good balance where you have to give discounts so people can have their children in school and also short term rentals. I, I agree you should tax them, I'm one of those people, so yes, tax me. Because if you make money, you should pay back to the community, it's all the extra enforcement that you actually do, it actually comes out of that tax money, it should not force the city anything extra. I also believe that, yes, you need to hire new people, there's not enough. And instead of blaming people doing this, people doing that, these are business owners. Business owners only understand money. Obviously, they don't care about the community, but that's fine, not everybody has to care. But everybody understands money, so if they own a business, it's money, tax them. So if they make up whatever, there's mess over there, some big fines, they're like, I, I just live in New York, in New York, huge fines if you don't recite the law or anything. And people start to behave because they're like, oh, I don't want this again. So essentially, if you just do this, people will stop and just make more, more control over the situation. So that's.
Thank you. All right, that closes the audience's public participation. No more cards, nobody, Daniel, I'm sure we got people out there.
Yes, sir, we have several hands raised at the moment. First is Rhonda Bruninger. Rhonda, you're unmuted, you have three minutes.
Great, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear, okay, great. First of all, I want to say, you know, I agree with Mayor Hoag that honestly, I do think, I, I think all, not only leased places, but vacation homes should be inspected annually, but I do not like the idea that you can pick and choose which ones you want to do. An example that Mr. Hoag didn't, didn't have at hand was, I do know of a vacation rental on Harrison that was actually, they, they had an outdoor shower and it was spewing reclaimed water and it was at a vacation rental. And our code enforcement caught that, but that's something that I think, you know, I would never want. My vacation, I wouldn't want anybody being sprayed with, a shower being used that has reclaimed water. I mean, that's just, it's, it's awful. So those kind of things, I do believe, but I think everybody has to be treated equally and these things all have to be inspected. You can't pick and choose and, because that, that will allow bullying to happen, residents to allow bullying on certain properties that, that don't like it, but if it's a universal, I am, I'm all for it. I also like the, I didn't even realize that there was a one fifty to two hundred square foot per occupant that's already in play, which is absolutely reasonable. And because people shouldn't be, you know, sleeping ten people to a living room, you know, with pullouts. So safety is a consideration, it's, it's important for vacation homeowners and I'm not, I'm not opposed to that. But the occupancy restrictions, as it was written, was, you know, you are zoned. The areas were not single family residential, were R two to R forty-nine, were high density. were high-density residential in the city of Cape Canaveral, which is far different from Cape Canaveral, or, or, I mean, Cocoa Beach and Satellite Beach. And so there's a lot of shared walls, shared ceilings, there's apartment complexes everywhere. And right on Harrison, I do have hotels on Harrison. I have the Seabreeze Hotel, I have the Point Settle Lodge, I have the Mariner Hotel. I am surrounded by hotels in the middle of the city. So this is a different zoning that's already in place. And you are, I mean, this, as the ordinance is written, is making it more restrictive on vacation homeowners than current, current zoning in the surrounding area. So I'm opposed to, to restricting it any more than 150 to 200 square feet. And last thing I just want to say is that I, I asked that the council stop making sensational unverified statements designed to upset the residents. Councilman, Councilwoman McKellum stated that there was a six-passenger golf cart. Somebody told her that there was a six-passenger golf cart that was doing wheelies on the sand dunes. I, I'm the only person that I know of that actually owns a six-person passenger golf cart for a vacation rental. And that, that golf cart is fully licensed, it has a license plate on it, and it can't even fit over onto that ramp, and it would not be, ever be used. If it got into the sand, it would be stuck. So my, my request to Ms. McKellum is that I would like verification of that, whether a police report or I, you know, hearsay from the residents to just upset them creates hatred in the community for vacation rentals when, when it's unnecessary and probably unverified. So please, when you, when you state these statements, you can't just listen to somebody what they say. I'm just asking that you back up and you research these statements. And as far as taxes go, that's the last person, I pay $5,500 in property tax per year, which is far more than three of my neighbors on Harrison for a 2,200 square foot home. And I pay more for schools than Mr. Lamar and Mr. Hoag combined. And I pay more, actually, I pay more in property tax than both of those residents. So I do pay and contribute to the schools, probably far more than the residents do, per, per home. So that's all I have to say.
Say what your taxes are, I own property over there. I pay property taxes too, pay a lot in Cocoa. But anyway, we're not going to be going here, we're going to take one more up-hand raise, and then we're going to take that eight o'clock break that I promised everybody. So Daniel, if you have one more, we're going to allow one more, then we'll take a break, come back to it.
All right, the next hand raised is Chris Quinn. Chris, you're unmuted, you have three minutes. You can unmute yourself at any time, Mr. Quinn. Mr. Quinn has left. Do you want to take another hand, or do you want, what do you prefer?
I have one card that was turned in from the audience, I think we'll do that one, and then we'll hold any other hands on your end. Then I won't take any more cards from the audience. I do have a card from Vanessa Gillis. Gillis?
Hello, I'm Vanessa Gilla, this is me right here. This is one of my first meetings that I have participated in, that you guys have brought very important facts to me, which is, one thing that concerned me was the seven days. I understand that seven days principle is very, what is the word, promising? And that definitely helps the citizens here keep a better control over everything that's happening. But I do believe maybe you could cut some slack and make it five days. Or I know people who come here, especially in hotels, they still do three-day rentals, as you mentioned, people on cruises. So I think maybe seven days might just be a tad bit too long, and five would be just reasonable. And I think that's a nice little adjustment right there, give people room to breathe, especially families who come here, and there's five-day cruises, there's three-day cruises. So that's how I look at it, the point of view, especially when I look at it at the hotels. I agree with everything you guys are saying, with your code restrictions, the electric, the plumbing inspections. I think that is all very great and should continue, and everything should be up to date for everyone's health and safety. Although what does drive a big concern is, as a person, I know I'm a person from New York. Sorry to say, I am a person from New York, but I am looking to buy a house here, and I do want to live here. But come to my realization, as looking here, looking to find a job, the minimum wage is almost, I've heard people getting paid $9 an hour. Now, from being in New York, I see that's a big issue for me, because I don't know how I would be able to sustain a living with high rent and everything, food accommodations, a kid, everything. It'd be a lot on my hand. But when I think about it a little deeper, I view the fact that, right now is spring break for a lot of kids. Everyone, the hotels are back, are packed, Airbnbs are packed right now, hence why you see people on golf carts doing donuts. Now, this isn't an everyday thing, but kids are kids. We have police and safety forces to help, and I do think that maybe, what is it? I forgot what they call it in movies, but like the, the safety patrol, when they come around and like report people like that. But what I think is, if you take into consideration that spring break is right now, I want to say, please correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of businesses right now make the bulk of their money within these two weeks. And that two weeks that they make their bulk, whether it's $10,000, just because everyone, every kid almost spends $1,000 here. They spend a week, they're spending $1,000. So every business is making a lot of money. I'm saying by, if you cut back the Airbnb's, the hotels are booked. You're cutting back the business's ways of paying back for a storm or something of a sort. In the sense that it's cutting back the amount of people that are able to, one, be here, as well as give money and revenue to this place to build the new place that's the NASA, what is it? It's like a little beach, you guys are cutting it down, but since there's a storm here, so you guys cut back, and Corona, you guys didn't take it down. I think it's the little L shape, where the little NASA thing, it's like a little, I don't know how to explain it. You guys know a little more about this place than me. But I do believe that it should be, I actually think a little harder, a little harder. There are better ways to do, to go about this, as well as putting more ownership onto the owners. Like say, when there's more tenants there or occupancy, you could tell people to have a camera outside to track how many people come inside. And if they're over, that's it, kick them out. Say you got three strikes, and then you're no longer to rent that out anymore as an Airbnb. You have lost your privileges and you have lost your rights. Because you couldn't maintain it as a proper adult, we give you permission to do it, and you're not able to uphold the standards. But I would like to present the other things, as they're saying. One lady spoke up and came here, and she said that people who rent for a week or three days in those days, her properties are well more maintained than the people who lived here for a year, because they have to keep up with it. And that is a big thing. For example, I know I went into one of the houses that one of my mom bought. There's a leak in the roof. We spoke to the tenant upstairs and said, listen, there's a problem. Can you fix it? She said, well, it's not my issue. But it kind of is, because now it's floating into our property. So it is a little bit of an issue, if you're not going to take care of it. As you say, with the extension cords, those are people who probably lived here for a year because they need the power. And not to say that, I know a lot of people in New York who come here to vacation.
Okay, I'll just finish up, because we're going to take a break. We're going to take a break. All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess. All right, we're going to reconvene this meeting. It's a little bit past our five minutes, but we had to wait till everybody got back. Okay, we're in public discussion on this ordinance, and I'm going to go back to Daniel again.
Yes, sir, we have a hand raised from Laura Renfro. Laura, feel free to unmute yourself, you have three minutes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I do want to thank you for your time, and I just kind of want, I'm very disheartened at the moment. When we first decided to invest in Cape Canaveral with hopes of eventually living in one of our rentals, we went to these same city council meetings, and we believed you at the time when you were talking about beautifying Cape Canaveral. And we bought so much into it that we spent hundreds and thousands in renovations, from plumbing to electricity, knocking walls down, building breakfast bars, to gorgeous outside porches and decks, supplying our guests with all they need for the beach. Pre-COVID, we met chemists from Austria, engineers from Sweden, and now we have all these great USA guests that were entertaining. I've been a little bit more involved with your meetings lately, and I could feel our hopes being smashed. I was rekindled when I heard Councilman Morrison open this topic tonight. Then I could feel like the mind's being closed shut again. And when you talked about schools, which is less than 3% of your population of Cape Canaveral, and schools, trust me, are important. I clean Airbnb's during the day, manage my properties, trim paint, weed more, and then I go teach four nights a week. And it's not because I have a cash cow investment we had. We thought we'd recoup last year, then COVID hit us, and now this is like another virus is brewing. As the gentleman speaker said before, we can always invest elsewhere, then who's going to support these schools? It's not going to be the retired people that are coming here from New York. You know, we had drug lords that were previous tenants, we have, we are still hearing about them. We had meth addicts down the street, always asking us for money, and they live here. These are people that live here. I'm surrounded by people that rent. And we do have amazing guests and neighbors where we're at. But most of them are long-term renters, and it's, and their properties definitely show the wear and tear of that. And we have done everything we can to beautify it. We always have five-star reviews, we go above and beyond, we recommend everything in Cape Canaveral for them to go to. So your churches you were talking about, we're telling people to go fill those on Sundays. That's where we're telling them to go. So after your last meeting, we started discussing getting out of the Cape. And after this meeting, unfortunately, we'll have to make it a reality. So I do wish And after this meeting, unfortunately, we'll have to make it a reality. So I do wish everybody good luck involved, but I just feel like there's mines being closed shut, and we need to open ourselves up to this century and what's going on with the world and how travel has changed, rather than smashing everything that we're trying to build and improve the area for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel?
Yes, sir. There's no more hand raised at this time.
Okay, we'll close public discussion and come back to the council. Ms. Morrison, you want to start or you want me to start on the other? It's up to you.
Oh, oh, wait. Um, yes, I, well, to the lady that just spoke, I don't understand how, if you're a good actor again and a good renter, how this is gonna be detrimental to your business. You know, the inspection has to happen by the fire department, seven-day minimum, and it has been on the books since 1980. I, you know, the occupancy is, again, mandated by the state. I think we need an ordinance to give our code enforcement some way to get rid of the bad actors. So I don't understand, and maybe, you know, the lady can call back, or maybe somebody in the audience, is how this is, how this code is detrimental to the, to the good actors, the good renters in our city. Again, you know, and people talk about, uh, these renters bring so much money to the city. Yes, they do, but as I talked to our city manager, and he was saying that the tourist development money, that we don't, that we never get that money back to Cape Canaveral. When we ask them for money, we get turned down. You know, I just think, and a lot of, a lot of the renters that we did research on and just looking briefly into the places are paying their business tax. Some places are homesteading their rentals, which cut, you know, hurts the city. All we want them to do is play by the game, by the rules in the game. And, you know, if we can, if they can live with these rules and we can, and the citizens of the city that live here can be happy with that, then we all can live here. And for people to say, you know, I've owned my house here 35 years, and I paint it, and I hire plumbers and electricians and people to mow my lawn, and, you know, it's not like if the short-term rentals were to go away, that every business would be done. I, I think we take pride in our city, the people that live here, and the people that have their homes here, take care of them. We do have a rental problem in the city and blight that we are needing to get a hold of. But I just, I, I can understand where Councilman Morrison's coming from. We don't wanna overreach, but, you know, if we could make it to where we're not being redundant with, with things that are already on the books and make it some kind of ordinance that when we do have bad actors, that we can do something about it, that we can take it to the magistrate and something to have. You know, we need to track the ones we have. We need to educate the people, and we need to enforce the law. And that's what we're trying to do with this ordinance. That's all I have to say right now.
My issue is, first of all, home rule. I really believe that local governments should be able to set standards and set the rules for everyone. I do agree, it should be consistent across the board. For landlords who are renting and have problems in their properties, those need to be taken care of. Our code enforcement needs to step up and take care of it. And I do believe we do have to have some regulation. I ride my bike around every single day. Everyone knows that. And I believe that the people who have vacation rentals are not following all of the rules. There are several that I know of that just run out for two or three days because I see that. I know that. I go buy it every day. And I know this is true. So I do think that we have to have some type of an ordinance for regulation, especially that seven-day rental period. I think it is important. I think that it brings in a certain clientele, and I think that most of our vacation rental owners believe that that's true also, that it's a certain clientele. So I would like to see that. And my other big issue is affordable housing. We do have an affordable housing problem. Uh, our people are being shut out, and I see it every single day. As I said, I'm out on my bike, so I know I see these smaller apartment buildings that have been converted into vacation rentals. And it is a problem for our people that need the low-income housing, and they need help. And some are having their rents hiked, and it's just not sustainable for them because many of them are in the service industry, and we need those residents. We need them too. So affordable housing is a big issue for me. And I believe that we have to take care of all of our people in our community, and that's an important part, is that affordable housing. Thank you.
Rowan?
Yes, sir. I agree with Councilman Kellum. She made a good point that why are these ordinance so detrimental to our city? I just don't see that. I see that the people that have these rentals are short-term rentals in place right now. The money that they're, they have been making, they're still gonna make. I don't think any of these things are ordinances or so rigid and so unenforceable. The honor system is, the honor system doesn't work. You can look at I-95. They've got signs in there posted 70 miles an hour. How many people comply with that 70 mile an hour? And I can tell you, a lot of them don't. It doesn't, it doesn't work. Rules are made for the, not for the good people, but for the people that, the players that don't wanna do the right thing. I totally agree with what the city has come up with, these ordinance. And I think that I would hate to see somebody leave because they don't agree or sell their property. I think there is the potential for still making money, and I think that we want that person that wants to abide by the rules and ordinances in our city to stay in our city. I have nothing else. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to address, the schools got brought up. You know, that's a new issue that we've just started talking about tonight, and, and then it kind of rolled into how that impacts the existence of our schools. That's not a complaint. It's, that I've heard. However, let's, let's call it a valid argument. The highest, we have to understand how the school is funded. The schools are funded by the lion's share of our property tax bill. And I know, we know that. I'm not saying that in any condescending way. I say that just reminding. We know that when the tax bill comes in, the lion's share goes to schools. That rate, just like our city, is a millage rate. That millage rate is applied to the total property value. I think that this entire council has agreed, especially with the statement that short-term rentals increases property value. So if short-term rentals increase property value, and the school takes a millage on that, does that help or hurt the schools? That clearly helps the schools. So there's no argument that it's going to hurt our schools. My child went to Capeview Elementary. I'm deeply concerned about our schools. They have their own issues. But there is no shame in, in who gets the majority of the taxes in, in, in this community. Florida's committed to education, and it comes out of the taxes. And so I think that this idea that the schools are gonna starve in funding because of this increase is, is not one. Now, if, if the other point was, no, it wasn't about the funding of the schools, it was because we are no longer gonna have families living here. That I, I, I understand. However, I'm not sure that, I mean, that's, that's quite a reach for how we should, I think, make public policy. If, if our goal, we were elected to, to ensure that we have a lot of children here, I'm not sure that's a task that ethically we should be taking up. I think that the beaches, the residentially zoned area along the beach is going to, as we've heard, always attract families. It certainly would attract me to this area, that I can go out on the beach with my kid. I can bike and walk these streets. And that rolls kind of into just the word family. With our seven-day rental, families do come here. And in fact, I've had some very pleasant experiences from short-term rentals who come for a couple of weeks, spend here. I get to know them. I've kept in touch with some of them. They've lived up in Wisconsin, and I would have never met this family had they not came here. They come back every other year for a couple of weeks. Cape Canaveral is in their hearts just as much as somebody who lives here, you know, on a, on an annual rent-to-rent, you know, basis. The property's beautiful, and my, my kids have an opportunity to play with their kids. And so is it different than a permanent full-time resident? Yes. But that door opens and closes, and that doesn't scare me. I think that getting back to the issues are noise. None of us like loud noises after hours. And, and the other issues with parking, I have confidence that our staff can address that. Seven-day minimum is where I think this all started. And it was the one that made me scratch my head, like, wow, we're really having a hard time kind of building the evidence to prove that somebody's violating a seven-day minimum, what seemed to be a pretty simple process to me. After meeting with our city attorney, city manager, and community development director, I'm like, no, it actually is a lot more difficult to prosecute, for lack of a better word. You can't just take a picture of somebody's car if they're there for a couple of days. Was that the cleaning person? Was that? And it became one of these policies that I think we kind of lucked out and got grandfathered in. It's really difficult to prosecute. And the hope came with this software and this third-party company who specializes in it, and I still maintain that hope today. I'm looking forward to see where that goes. The, the issue that I've heard from council is, for those that play by the rules, I don't know where in here this, this is concerning. I think the, the black box that we haven't unveiled is what the fees will be. And I think that that ultimately will be a huge point at a future agenda item on where we set that fee. But tonight, that's not really on here. It's just, it's more about process and requirements that are gonna happen. But all of these requirements do have a cost at a minimum. It's time, and time is money. And some of them are gonna require a cost. We've struck through, or at least the planning and zoning board worked hard to come back and to say, one of them, which I think was a tangible cost, was the, the background check requirements. And, and, and so if the council likes that, I think we have alignment there that we are gonna hopefully strike through that burden. But, and then also, the, the other amendment that came back was the, the three-year log is limited to only one recording, I'm sorry. So modify the proposed language to specify that the three-year log is limited to only one recording, the number of occupants, and booking dates. I think that, 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 that is better than what we had. But just the log in general, to me, is something that's kind of a, an intrusion on, on, on rights. If, if they're registering and they're providing all those documents that Chair Russell chaired at the public and that we've all read over, I think that we have enough there. And so I'd like to just propose that we, we get rid of the log. And I think that any complaints, I think our software is gonna be able to identify who's coming in, who's coming out, and, and their, their support team around that. The other ones that are, to answer the, the questions on where in here this burden, and I think that goes too far to specifically, in section, the, the first point, G, and I'm in the summary, is the exterior site sketch indicating off-street parking? I mean, I, I think that if they've built a home just like anyone, there's, we have minimum parking requirements. That home got a permit based on those parking requirements. Yes, thank you, Mia. I am on number one. G, I guess, on page three of five of the, yep, right there, thank you. Exterior site sketch indicating off-street parking. So that, to me, I don't think is, is needed. And the interior site, site sketch, I mean, I, I don't think that's needed too. I don't understand how that addresses a seven-day minimum. I mean, why are we asking exterior and exterior site sketches for seven-day minimums? And that's really kind of where I'm thinking as I'm reading through this, is it's all about the seven-day minimum. We have noise. We have litter. We have parking already handled. And so the next one, a maximum overnight occupancy, item number two, the whole occupancy limits are already, we have building codes, we have limits of, you know, how much space in, in the rooms, and as we heard from our fire chief tonight, those, those are already in place. And I'd like to just strike through anything that, that mentions occupancy above and beyond what our code, the building code that we adopted already addresses. To tier it by square footage and the numbers, that is a, a big impact on them. I think that one of the property owners talked about how she built a home to, to be able to have a maximum occupancy, and they're gonna lose a couple of occupants or more based on this, and I don't want that. I think that if there's enough parking spaces, occupancy to me is about safety and about parking. And I think that with the inspections that are already happening, and with the parking, we're gonna be okay. But to go in, and again, Chair Russell brings up a very valid point. We heard it from other people tonight about we've written codes that we have to be able to enforce. It's just a piece of paper. It's meaningless if we can't enforce it. And this is one where I'm, I'm questioning, it's just more enforcement that we're gonna have to back with administrative support, and I don't think that it's gonna solve the seven-day minimum problem. The item number four, the annual inspection requirement, again, that's one that I think is already happening. We don't need to do it. And, and I think that to inspect Florida Department of Business and Professional Regulations, if there's a complaint, the authority is given there, why wouldn't we file the complaint with the Florida Department of Business Professional Regulations? And we always talk about unfunded mandates, that the state statute, they pass laws that, that we have to go and enforce. Well, while they may not be, they have the resources to inspect that. We can administratively follow up and manage those inspections from, from here, but let's use the state's resources to, to, to inspect the, the laws that they've put in place, not ours. The number five establishes duties of vacation rental owners to include this, this, having this contact info here to be present, item B, to be present, the annual, annual vacation rental inspection. I, I think that that's, that's already in place. I think that naturally, the, the property owner is already on the property card. And if our fire chief, you know, there's a process already in place to be able to go through that. I think this just creates more confusion and more layers. Again, maintain the three-year log. I don't think that's necessary. And the sexual offender, we've gotten that up. Hopefully, we're gonna strike through that as well. And the accessory structure, looks like that's gonna be coming back on another date in a different way. and on another date in a different way. Um, the, the registering a contact, jumping back up to A, I skipped that accidentally, registering a contact phone number, which will be monitored on a 24-hour-a-day, seven-days-a-week basis. I mean, that, to me, is, is okay. I, I think that's fine. That makes sense. Um, it, it's pretty logical to know that if something's going wrong, you need to be able to get in touch. But again, this gets back to the Florida legislators' intent. What do we do when a, an annual renter is, there's a problem and we need to be able to contact them? How do we get in touch with those property owners that live in another state? Whatever that process is, either we require this for everyone, or, and not just the short-term rentals. I think that that's where we're going to get ourselves in trouble with the state of Florida, is when we start treating short-term rentals different than any other rental property, as we heard from Ms. Weeks tonight. Um, and so those are, those are some of the things that jump out to me that I hope we can, um, overcome here. And the, you know, the, the problems, we can keep talking about problems, you know, with sand dunes and things like that. But I just wanted to say for a second, even if there, the story about the golf cart on the sand dunes, even if it was true, and let's assume it is true, we don't truly know because we can't verify, Councilmember Kellum wasn't there, but I'm going to say, okay, sure, that did happen. Would it warrant this level? I don't think so, uh, of, of ordinance. And, and that's where I go, where, and to date, we have not received, getting back to, uh, Rhonda's comments, a comprehensive list of all the properties, and then to be able to see how many complaints we've had from each property. To make good policy, we need to have good data. And when I asked, I think it was a few, a week or a, a month of the complaints that we had, but we're not getting a lot of golf carts on the dunes complaints. We're getting complaints about, uh, yeah, um, uh, noise and parking. And, and to me, this has gotten outside. And so this does have a cost to it. All these documents have to be provided, and the state of Florida is already requiring them, um, for us to request from DPPR, uh, and, uh, a list of who these transient properties are, I think makes a lot of sense. And then we can go through and, and monitor them based off the state's list. But to send them through another layer of bureaucracy that they have to go through, that normal one-year annual, annual renters don't have to go through, is where I think we're going to get, um, in trouble. And so those are, those are my comments. Um, yes, we, the, the argument on home rule, um, that's a, that's an argument for Tallahassee. I don't think we're having that argument tonight. Um, we're not, we're not saying that we already have the home rule. Those are being infringed in Tallahassee. And the argument on seven-day minimum, that's not even on this tonight. We aren't, we aren't discussing a seven-day minimum. That laws, our ordinance is already in the book. So, um, those are the things I would, I would strike through, getting rid of the occupancy, getting rid of the, the, um, the logs and some of the sketches, I think that, and then what the P and Z board recommended as well. Um, that would lighten this load up a little bit. And it's going to come down to how well this company can enforce the seven-day minimum. But anything in here that doesn't address that, this just makes it more difficult on property owners to rent out their property. And I think that's going to cause a lot of negative externalities in this area, unintended consequences. Cape Canaveral is becoming more beautiful, I think largely because people are investing in short-term rentals. Um, and my overwhelming response has been, it's been more good than bad. Um, so those are all my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Brown?
You all right? All right. My, my take on it is, like I say, I support the Airbnbs. I won't call them air, uh, whatever, Airbnbs. I, um, I agree with, like I say, I agree with our ordinance, but if we can enforce what we got, we can enforce it. I think we can enforce a lot of this, what's in here. The reason it's not enforced is because it's not the current law in this city, the things that they're asking for. You ask that gentleman over there to enforce something on the street, and he says, I can't do it unless I got the tools. The tools are law, so you give them law. We can enforce the parking, and the reason for the enforcement of parking is, I see a lot of cars parked on the street overnight. I'm sure everybody has seen it. And that's against the ordinance. And to not enforce that part of it, then this gentleman here needs that tool to enforce that on these things. Yeah, even the people that live here park on the street. It, it's something that just has to be enforced. And like I, I've heard a couple of the council, this ordinance isn't putting any more imposition on the person that does it a hundred percent correct, which is there, and the person over there that's skirting the law. So it is not putting any more imposition on you, because you're obeying the law that, if you're obeying everything in this ordinance, you got nothing to worry about. I don't see where the complaint is. The complaint to me is things like I heard of, of Mrs. Kellum, a golf cart running down the street. I see golf carts running down the street. I don't know who they are, don't know where they come from, but I see them on my street. And I see them going to the beach, and I see them coming from the beach. So I don't know where they're going or where they're at. But I also, I have, like I say, I have, uh, Airbnbs right next door to me. I look out there today, and there's a blue car there, and next tomorrow, there's a yellow car. Don't bother me as long as they behave. Don't make any noise. Don't, you know, disrupt the neighborhood. I don't have a problem with them. But I am going to see that the laws get enforced. The, the things that have been removed by P and Z, I agreed with that they needed to be removed. I think that's a little bit too much to be, uh, checking all the, the, uh, bad people that supposedly were coming to these things. I don't think they're bad. I think they're people that just down here to have a good time, they get a little carried away sometimes. And the parking on the street, the parking is an issue as far as I'm concerned. And I do agree with, uh, the sketch of the property. You're going to, you're going to have a show, if you got 10 cars going to be there, show where they're going to park. Not in the street, not on the yard. It has to be a pervious, unpaved surface or paved surface. Whatever the code says, that's what you should do. I see, I see the cars parked on the yards. I see many cars, more so than what the driveways hold. So those are things that I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay with the ordinance the way it's written. The people on the P and Z board have deli- deleted the few things that I have had a problem with. I have no problem with the occupancy factor as long as it is to the Florida billing code and the Florida state fire codes. You can have many people as that law allows. I don't have a problem with that. But if you got a two-bedroom home and you got 40 people in it, I think there's a problem there. What if the front room catches on fire and you got, try to go out of the three-door door, four or five people at one time. You aren't going to go out. You're not going to get out. So these are the things that I look at. I don't, I don't have a problem with how many you got there, as long as this according to the fire, fire codes and the billing codes. But when you get over occupancy, then you got a problem. But other, other than the factor, the, the things that were removed, I'm, I'm in favor. I'll stick with the ordinance. I do favor the things. And like somebody mentioned, all I've heard tonight is about how much money you bring to the city. Well, the city don't get none of your TDC money. We have yet to get TDC money. And we generate a lot of it, but we have to put up with all the generation of it. I was shocked, said, no, I thought we, you know, over a period of time, we did get a little bit of TDC dollar here and there, but we don't get any. We've got nothing. We were promised some, but we haven't got it. But I'm going to, I'm going to, uh, support the ordinance that's before me, the, uh, deletions I'll live with, the, uh, there'll be another ordinance come back with the, uh, rental and rental of a, uh, outbuilding or accessory building, as some people have, uh, that rent them, and they're not supposed to be renting them. I don't have any problem with anything else in it. And like I say, and I've heard many, many of the council speak, this ordinance isn't against people that are doing it the right way. This is the people that are doing it the wrong way, and the people that aren't even registered to do it. And there are some of those people in the city. And with this software we got coming in, we'll eventually get our arms around it, and hopefully, it'll be a good thing. So I don't have anything else to say other than that, if there's other people want to comment again.
I have a couple of questions. Um, I don't see the exterior site sketch indicating the off-street parking and the interior sketch. I don't see where that would be burdensome. It's not like you're getting an engineer to come and do it. It's a sketch. And I think if it's in the file of the, of the rental, um, place, that if something happens and somebody says, you know, there's 10 cars there, you can just go to the file and look and see. I don't, I don't see where that's detrimental. Um,
Well, this comes detrimental, not to interrupt you, but it comes detrimental to when you got two driveways that hold four cars, and you got 10 cars there.
No, but I'm saying it's not detrimental to the owner to provide a sketch of the outside.
No, 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 it's not detrimental. No.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
And then the other thing is, the maximum occupancy is, this is the same, if I'm understanding it, as the state, is that what the fire chief said?
This is different. What we're proposing is, is a different calculation method. And part of the, the nice thing about this is it's very simple to apply, which makes it simple to, for anybody to submit, oh, I can follow this, you know, but here's the math, and there it is, and it's done.
Okay. And then my other question was, um, on the annual in, vacation inspection, it says that the, the owner has to be there. But in other places, it says, um, like when you register, it can be the owner or, or either personally or through an agent. So couldn't we change the inspection to be either the owner or their agent, property manager?
Do that if you want to.
Do the annual?
Certainly add, I think there's a section in the ordinance where it just says owner and doesn't include or agent. Uh, but there is, there is a provision in the ordinance that says that the owner of a vacation rental can designate an agent to act on their behalf. And it's a blanket provision in the ordinance that covers it, but it, there's one, I think that one section you pointed out, we probably should put or agent, just so it's consistent.
Yeah, that would be, um, page, uh, three of five.
Agree. Actually, in the ordinance, I believe it's page 13 of 16.
Okay.
Um, Daniel, if you could go there. Page 13 of 16 of the ordinance, um, starting at line 11. Vacation rental owner or a designee.
Okay.
I think that would, that would solve that, if that's correct.
And then, um, one more question I had is, if the vacation rental is sold, the registration that they, that those people already paid for transfers to the new owners, is that fair? Or they have 30 days to come in and re-register?
Um, yes, if you go to, um, page nine of 16 of the ordinance, uh, starting at line eight, talks about, um, some other duties of the owner. And number one, starting at page 11, or line 11, is to inform of a change of ownership, vacation rental.
They have 30, 30 days.
Yeah. Starting at page.
To transfer.
That's up line 23.
And then my other comment about families is, I, I didn't mean it as far as add the law, and we all, you know, we all, I'm just, you know, if we, if we transcend into all vacation rentals, are, are there going to be kids that go to the school? Is, is my point. And that could not happen or happen. It's just, you know, down the road, what are we doing to our city? Like Lamar said, are we making a vacation residential place where, you know, nobody actually lives here? Uh, I mean, I, I'm exaggerating to prove my point, but, um, that's where that came from. And then the other thing, um, I just, uh, oh, about the golf cart on the beach, this was somebody that wrote me an email. I don't know if it's true or not, but my point of that was, these people don't know the rules. So that's part of what our ordinance should be, is to, you know, track, educate, and enforce. So they need to know the rules. And I, I know that's going to be part of the information we're going to give them in the registration, but, um, and they, you know, we were just out there planning to see it. So it's kind of disheartening when something like that happens. And, you know, people take stake in their city. That, that's where I was coming from. And that's all right.
Ken, um, on that application or whatever you have posted, Ken, it also has something to do with, make sure that our short-term rental residents stay off the sea dunes and no dogs allowed on the beach. That needs to be added to.
Yes, sir. Um, any of the existing laws, existing ordinances, we can administratively add and update to that posting requirement. And that would be, um, distributed or transmitted through the company, the, the registration company, that kind of correspondence. As it changes throughout the year, we might add something, you know? Who knows what we might add that's appropriate, but we can send an updated notification list. Mayor, just a couple of comments, if I may. Um, one of the things the council did recently was that they approved, um, an improved, an improved parking definitions. You expanded the definitions of improved parking. Of course, all parking has to take place on-site on the property, but it has to be on improved surfaces. In other words, not on the grass. So that provided a sense of relief for those dwellings, perhaps, that are challenged by not having enough driveway space. Well, you can go here, you can put in, you know, pervious parking on, on certain areas. Obviously, we're very concerned about stormwater runoff. We don't want more stormwater runoff. But pervious parking, there's, there are options in our code now that can provide parking relief for people to park more cars on their site. So that's, that's a relief that this council has already granted. And the last thing I wanted to mention, if we could go, Daniel, to page five of five of the, uh, cover, the agenda cover. Um, near the top there, um, scroll up a little bit there, as an effective date of October 21st, I mean, October 1st. Um, as we know, this is going through legislative session right now. They're in the middle of the 60-day legislative session. We're watching, you know, the, the tennis match, you know, it goes for and against from day to day. It's changing. We don't know where we're going to end up on the home rule side of things. So for that reason, we think it's, it's not prudent to move forward with a registration or a fee program at this time, because who knows, we might end up doing refunds or something, and that, that's kind of messy. So we're looking at June before we really know something definitive from the legislature, before we could get something to the council, June, maybe even July, depending. It's hard to say. At that point, we're so close to the fiscal year ending, uh, and this registration would be tied to a fiscal year. It doesn't really make sense to do a two-month or a three-month prorated fee. So we're recommending that we make this, if you approve it tonight, if you do, recommending an effective date of October 1st. That would allow us time to, uh, continue negotiations with the web-based short-term rental compliance modern company, and also talk about, have time to talk about the resolution of the fees. What is that fee amount going to be? That also gives us time to give out any notice to owners, so they know what's coming. Uh, taking that little bit of breather adds all of that for us. And I think there's a real benefit to having an October 1st effective date.
Agreed, counsel? You all right? Ms. Marshall?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's fine.
Okay. All righty, um, anybody else have any comments? anybody else have any comments further?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on this second round of new topics. The, the occupancy, uh, on page ten of sixteen, uh, line eight, in the actual ordinance, proposed ordinance. Based on square footage there, is this different than just a, a normal property that rents it out? Because when I go down to section or line number thirty on that same page, it says the maximum occupancy restrictions set forth in this subsection shall not apply when the vacation rental is being physically owner occupied. If, if, if I own a, or someone owns a forty-five-hundred-square-foot home, which I'm referring to line nineteen there, it's limited to fourteen occupants. Could fifteen occupants live in that under our code if they just live there permanently? Is there a limit?
Uh, there's a hundred and fifty square foot per.
Per occupant?
Per occupant. Divide forty-five by one-fifty and you'll have your answer. That's our code, that's state. Forty-five hundred.
Forty-five people could live?
No, no. Divide forty-five hundred by a hundred and fifty square feet. And you'll have your occupancy load. Is that correct, Dave? Okay.
What is?
One-fifty by. Yeah, I'm saying, but the occupancy load we're worried about. Yeah, right. But I'm saying the building, what we're worried about is, but you're.
So I.
Oh, I.
So I did the forty-five hundred divided by one-fifty, and that's thirty.
That for this code?
So if I, if you own it, you just live there, you could have thirty people in a.
Oh, I'm not saying that. I don't know what, I don't know what that is. Just fly on the wall back there.
I tried to stay in the corner. Why? Yeah, there, there's a, there's a definition of a family in the zoning ordinance. And I don't recall off the top of my head what that is, but I, but I think that may come into play as well. So it's not, you can't skirt around that, 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 can't have yourself and twenty-nine of your closest friends living with you in a home. Uh, the fam, the definition of family, I think it's something like four. I, I don't recall, but I think there is, there, there's, there's some guidance there.
Then there's something that you can't have unfamily members.
Correct. It limits the number of non-revived.
Above your.
Members.
Guided laws.
I can't give you the specific number right now. But there is guidance there in that definition of what a family is.
Right. So I think that, I mean, that's where, thank you, Dave, I, that makes sense. That's, that's why this section, is the council willing to just say, we will regulate short-term rentals the same as we do everybody else? Why are we, why are we differentiating that? And, and frankly, it talked about bloodline and family. I mean, this is America. I mean, you got adoptions, you got people who live together, they call themselves family. I mean, if people agree to live together, they shouldn't have to be quote-unquote family. I think the agreement to live together is enough. And to say that there's this limit that's very different than everybody else is, is where I hope council can say that the same laws that apply to everybody else on this one applies to, to short, to these people who are rented out in a short term. Realistically, there's no, no one's going to put more than they can park. So you're not going to have these red herring scenarios, I don't think, of these people. So that's it. If we want to get just down into it, I don't, line number eight, the maximum overnight occupancy, if you put anything there, can it just say that we follow the, the, the regulations that are applied to, you know, the building code, the, the density and occupancy requirements, um, instead of separating them, right? I mean, I think it's these types of ordinances that makes Tallahassee steam up and say, no, you're treating them differently. This is the problem. It's exact thing, same thing that happened with medical marijuana pharmacies. They started putting them in different areas and they said, no, you have to treat them like everyone else. And our job is to protect liberties. That's what we were elected to do in this country. That's what we all put our right hands up, is, that's what we say, liberty and justice for all, every meeting. And to me, this is just, when you say, I don't see where this is causing a big difference, or the people playing by the rules. We've heard a property owner say that this is going to negatively impact them. So if we had to strike through anything, can we just know that the parking is going to be limited? This is, to me, not going to be an issue anyways. And I just think this text alone has an equal opportunity infringement, uh, in my opinion, uh, issue. And so my proposal is that we, we strike through the maximum overnight occupancy and just apply our existing code.
And Mayor, just for clarification, I, I believe to conceptualize this, what we're looking at on the page, from line nine through line twenty-seven would be stricken. Beginning on the third word of line twenty-seven would be, the occupancy of the vacation rental shall not exceed the maximum occupancy permitted in the Florida Building Code, Florida, French Court International Property Management Code. I think Councilmember Morrison is, is requesting we strike lines nine through twenty-seven of two and through the word, the number one.
Yes.
Well, I think my input on that would be, well, gee whiz, I didn't know what the Florida building code was. I had thirty people in here. I didn't know.
Well, we can add the building code, just like we educate dogs on beach. Why can't we just tell them what the Florida building code is?
Well, that's what you're kind of, that's what you're kind of doing. You're telling them it's an occupancy load. But I didn't know, I, you know, I didn't know what that was. I'm the guy that fronted it with. I don't, I don't have a clue what it is.
How are they going to know what this is?
It's in the ordinance. This is it. If you're going to have.
Why don't we put what the Florida building code is in the ordinance?
This is more lenient than.
This is more lenient than the Florida building code that we can't.
We, I mean, it's just not as, more stringent than the Florida building code.
Right.
But, you know, you, you can, you can put nothing in there, and there's still going to be reasons why nobody understands. You can put all the verbiage you want, and there's still going to be people that don't understand, because they don't do their due diligence when they do things.
But are we trying to fix that problem? I don't think we're trying to fix ignorance of the law. I think we're, if, if we have a promulgation problem where we're, where people are not aware, I, I think there's a huge opportunity there. But the number we put down is what I'm talking about. And I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. People are going to ignore the law. It happens. But what I'm saying is, is for those that do abide by the law, they're being penalized here. They're getting.
Nobody being penalized here if they're abiding by the law.
Occupancy opportunity than somebody who, who lives here.
If somebody's abiding by the law, how are they being penalized? You just made a statement that you're penalizing them because they're abiding by the law. And you're penalizing. If they're abiding by the law, nobody gets penalized.
There's less occupants. This, this code today reduces the amount of occupants than they can have when, if it goes into effect in October. That's what, that's what we're doing.
I think.
Mr. Gergonezi, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, no, Mr. Mayor, I just, I think I stated this the last time we talked about this, or this was at the P and Z meeting. Just to reiterate, the fire chief said that his fire code talks about maximum occupancy of the structure. This ordinance, it's like, you, you, you're proposing to throw out the FDR engine, substitute it for an apple. This ordinance only pertains to overnight occupancy of, overnight occupancy of transient occupants. It doesn't, the fire code and the building code talk about the total occupancy load of the, of the structure. It's two different, it's two different things. So what's being proposed in this ordinance, again, is to establish a maximum overnight occupancy for transient, transient occupants of a vacation rental. That's, that's what's being proposed. It's the council's decision, um, whether or not you want to impose this type of transient occupancy, restriction on vacation rentals or not. Um, substituting the fire code and the building code is not the same thing, and it's not going to get you with being proposed in this ordinance. Relative to permanent housing, um, going to Dave's comment, I looked up the definition of family, a single-family home. Um, yes, it's an occupancy of the home by a family, which is people related by blood, marriage, or adoption. It's a, it's a, it's a renowned method of, of regulating permanent occupancy that the U.S. Supreme Court established many years ago. Or for unrelated occupants acting under a single household. And that's for permanent, that's for permanent occupancy. That is a pair compared to what's being proposed in this ordinance, which is, again, maximum overnight occupancy of transient occupants for vacation rentals. The definition of overnight is the hours between ten PM and seven AM. That's the time period in which this ordinance proposes to regulate the maximum number of transient occupants in a vacation rental unit.
Can't we match, I'm just trying to align it up with a permanent resident.
Permanent residency would, assuming that the eight occupants are unrelated, let's say you had eight occupants, eight transient occupants, and they were unrelated. This ordinance is actually more generous than, um, you know, if they were going to be permanent occupants of, of, of the home. So I'm, I'm not sure that, what that means. And then that's, again, comparing a pair to a, to a, to an orange here. The intent, and this ordinance was just to focus on, like you, like you indicated, just to focus on vacation rentals and the max, maximum, maximum occupancy for vacation rentals. It's just, it's, and as, as the city manager indicated, these numbers are actually more generous than the surrounding community like Coker Beach, which limits it just eight occupants period. There, there is no sliding scale, as I understand it, in my ordinance for bigger structures, but, so that, that's different. It's your call, the council's call, whether or not, you know, they think it's necessary to, to, um, you know, adopt a, a maximum occupancy for, for vacation rentals.
Well, I, I'm under pressure. Eight people in a dwelling not exceeding two thousand feet under enclosed is more than generous. I, I understand what Councilman Morrison is saying, but I think he believes that we shouldn't regulate the amount of people that go in the house or dwelling at all. If it was, if it was twenty, he would probably still have an issue with it, because he doesn't feel that people should be regulated in their own private environment. I think that we need to leave it as written. And I think it's more than fair, um, the amount of people, even fourteen and a forty-five hundred square foot. I think we need to leave the, this ordinance in particular, um, from what, where does it start? From nine to, from nine to, yeah, as written.
I just thought that the dimensions of parking would regulate it, uh, enough. And so, okay, can, could we go up by two on each one with that? Because it, because I'm going back to some comments of property owners who said that this would restrict them, um, from what they were, and it wasn't a lot of, I think it was by two. So, yeah, you're right, uh, Councilmember Brown. I, I don't think we should be in the business of regulating that. But if we're going to do it, if we could go up ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, that to me, I think, would be, would address the concern that we heard from the public.
Let's, I don't, okay, the public that he's talking about, the concern, I don't know what public that you're talking about that wants more people in a unit. What I'm hearing from the public is that this right here is more than adequate, eight people, fourteen people, and a forty-five hundred. I haven't heard the argument that we need to have more people in these short-term rentals as, uh, according to what we've proposed in, in the ordinance. If that's the case, then they haven't come to me, is that's what you're saying?
They, they actually, I think they did come to you, but we had a lot of comments, so it might be all coming mixed together. You have to go back and listen to the meeting. I think it was Rhonda who actually has been consistently outspoken on this issue. Who said, I think she said sixteen or fifteen, might have been one, but I do remember her saying it. And like anything, I've, you know, if somebody complains, I know that there's more, and so, um, that's it. Uh, what about, so, I mean, that's it. Would we be willing to go up by, by two? I mean, again, the, the parking's going to constrain them, um, in, in the size of an average car.
It's up, it's up to the, it's up to the, up to the council. Certainly, you have the ability to tweak these numbers if you don't agree with them. I'll also just clarify too, that the, the maximum occupants don't include children under the age of six as written as well.
For your.
That, that number is also, the six-year-old limit is also subject to, uh, a six-year-old exclusion is also subject to your discretion if you think that needs to be bumped up a little bit. Well, it's whatever the, you know, the intent is trying not to create and, and, and overburden the structure and, and overburden, um, on, on the, on the single family or residential neighborhood.
You, you actually got, you could have, uh, in that first one where you have eight people, you could have a possibility of twelve two occupants that don't, that own the building staying there and two children. Or you could have four children amongst those eight people. So you got actually twelve occupants in there. Not counting the children, which are occupants. Uh, I'm, I'm not in favor of changing the numbers. I was really drastically looking at it the first time. I thought it was absurd until I started looking at what the building codes are and that type of thing as far as safety codes, the fire codes. And I had my discussion with the manager, and I, I think, uh, I think with the way it's written, it's kind of really loose, because you could have ten children with eight people. Come in and stay at night. You got eighteen in there, which is above your two thousand square foot mark. Kids aren't counting. They're not counting.
So you're proposing restrict it more?
No, no. No, I'm, I'm saying, leave it the way it is.
Okay.
Leave it the way it is, because you're going to have more than ten people, you're going to have more than eight people, because the children are not even counted on this.
Right.
And the, the, the total owners that own the place could be there along with these eight people, so you're, you've already given them that flexibility you wanted to give them. You more than give them more flexibility.
I guess I'm just at, like, if you take the eight occupants, two thousand, and you divide it by, uh, two thousand divided by eight, uh, the, the first one there, I got two hundred and fifty square feet. When I do, do the, the, the highest one, forty-five hundred, it's three hundred and twenty-one square feet. It would make more sense to me that we keep the, the, the square footage closer in proximity. That's it. I, I think that, could we just do an, an even amount, because it, a forty-five hundred square foot place is a, I don't know how many of those are in, that's a big property. And if fifteen people want to get together, just say, uh, a, a, a baseball team, and they want to come and enjoy a week down in beautiful Cape Canaveral responsible, they, they pay the fines, similar to Councilmember, or Mayor Tim Raymond was saying. Uh, what, why can't that happen? This code doesn't allow that. And so, um, if we, if we either made the square footage proportional or just went up by, by two, I think it would, would make a lot more sense, but, um, doesn't sound like, is the council open to that? It sounds like, Mayor, you, you want to keep it as written?
No, if you take, take the fourteen, for instance, down there, on the one at forty-five hundred square feet.
Yeah.
You want to make it proportional, you got a two thousand square foot house that has only eight people allowed. Take one that's more than double, and you're only allowing fourteen people. Take that number back to the two thousand square feet, and you'd have probably eighteen people in there, according to making it proportional. I, I don't run the number in my head, but just quickly looking at the numbers. I, I don't run the number in my head, but just quickly looking at the numbers, what you're trying to say is make it proportional. It can't work. It won't work. Well, it, it can't work.
Are these standards? Are these, let me ask the city manager. Are these numbers standard in the building code and occupancy codes?
No.
No.
This is a number that they come up with by an average of square footage, which is probably the best way to work it because that's the way occupancy works.
As the city attorney said, these numbers can be changed by the council tonight. You can establish the numbers where you want them to be.
What if we, if we did what, um, Councilman Morrison's saying? Just did it in proportion, start with the eight and then go up.
Are you saying keep the ratio the same per square foot? For instance, if you look at the category of 3,000 square feet, 10 occupants, that's 300 square feet per occupant. Are you suggesting the council consider having just a straight 300 square foot per occupant?
Yeah, I'd, I'd go for the higher one. I just did the math. Uh, eight occupants per 2,000 square feet is one per 250 square foot. The next one, I use the, the maximum 3,000, it's one for 300 square foot. So that's a more stringent rule. One for 250, one for 300, then it goes one per 375, and then when you get to the big one over 4,500, it's one per 320. So the most lenient one in here is, and I think this is exactly what Rhonda had brought up, the 12, the 4,500 square foot property or below between 3,001, you actually get 375 square feet. That's, um, that, that's larger than, than having the bigger property. I don't understand, or it's more stringent, excuse me. So that's where I, I'm just having trouble with the logic. If we used 375, I'm sorry, or 250 square feet for all of them, that would be a much more fair approach.
Yeah, it's an inverse relationship to the factor. So if the factor is lower, you have more occupants. If the factor is higher, you have fewer occupants.
But the, the math doesn't work out like that.
Uh, one person per 250 square feet allows more than one person per 300 square feet.
Yeah, but if you've got 4,500 and one, you've, you've got a better opportunity than the one above. So, um, you got 321 square foot. I, I think that parking handles all this, but again, it's, it's a valid complaint that we heard from the community.
Hey, you have anything, Mr. Brown? We're going to move on. We got, we got another ordinance to go through.
Everybody want to go through this change of the occupancy at all?
I think that, um, just to be more fair, that if we could get it as a standard, um, you know, rate or...
You make it a standard, you're going to hurt one end or the other. Make it a standard, judge it on 350, that takes your 2,000 square foot down to about six people. So you're, you're... I think you got a margin, I think you got a happy camp.
But why don't we just do 250? Do, take the lowest one and apply it to all, and that's equal.
Would you want to make it 250 for, that's going to change the 14?
It changes all of them.
It's going to...
Yeah, so 250, if you're going to do 250 for eight occupants, do it for all of them. And so, you know, whatever that math comes out to be, at least it's proportional.
250 into 3,000.
3,000 divided by...
That'll hurt that one, I can tell you right away, it's going to lower your occupancy.
On the 4,500, you're going to definitely lower it.
It takes it up to 12 for the second one, if we apply 250. Uh, 4,522?
It, it won't work as a, as a set number for all of them. You're going to hurt one end or the other.
But we can get closer. It goes to 18.
Well, uh, you're going to be, you're going to hurt...
The, the third, a bullet number three, see, which is above the 14, but, and then if you do 40, I mean, it's kind of hard to do. I'll just use 5,000 as, as the last one. It's, it's 20. And so that's, you know, that even goes above the, the bump it up by two.
But you increase the square footage.
Yeah, if it went 10...
I think if you change it, you're going to be, you're going to be here long tonight. You're going to have a lot more hands raised.
10, 12, 18, 20 would make the most sense to me. That's the proposal. Uh, or then up by two. So, okay. That, that's my concern. I, I don't want to support it if we can get that. And then the, the, if we're not willing to strike through the, um...
I just, you're going to hurt somebody, and you're going to start to hear from the people that you're hurting.
Well, this is, we've already heard from people that this is going to hurt.
How is it going to hurt?
I don't think it's...
Because they can't, in a 4,500 square foot, they, they can, today, they can rent out 15 or 16 people.
That's the one end, and I don't think we got, you were just saying a little while ago, you don't think we got one, I don't think, the city, but...
I just said, I don't know how many we have. That's a big...
I don't think you have.
I don't want to go labor. I mean, if the will isn't here, if we just want to roll, um, we've heard there is no standard. You're in control of this. And, and, yeah, there's, there's just too much here. This is all...
We've been on this subject for two hours.
Okay.
And it's a dense subject.
I know, I know. It'll go all night.
I'd like to make a motion. Um, Councilman, um, Kellum suggests that we change, um, that one place to, or designate me or agent. I agree with that. Otherwise, I'd like to go ahead and make the ordinance 10, 20, 21, um, as, as written.
With the P and Z.
With the adjustments.
With the attorney.
There was P and, with the P and Z recommendations and effective date of October 1.
Yep.
Yep.
We did have several changes. Were, were aware of what they were?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brown, and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond to accept the ordinance as written with the changes that were made by P and Z and the, the addition of the word agent in the section where the inspections are.
Councilmember Brown?
For.
Mayor Ho?
For.
Councilmember Kellum?
For.
Councilmember Morrison?
Against.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
For.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinance number 11-2021, item number five. Mr. Gergenese? I believe this is the first reading on this.
This is, um, second reading of ordinance number 11 dash, uh, 2021, ordinance of the City Council, the City Cape Canaveral, Florida. Mending Chapter 98 subdivisions, Division 5 lot splits authorized certain unimproved lot splits occurring prior to March 16th, uh, 2010, under the requirements set forth herein, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions incorporated into the co-severability and effective date. Um, I think I may have misspoke its first reading. Um, it went to the Planning and Zoning Board, uh, Planning and Zoning Board reviewed it and, uh, recommended, recommended. It was postponed, it was postponed, yeah, postponed. So, um, yeah, I'd be happy, I think we discussed this stuff before, didn't we? And, um, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you may have regarding these, this ordinance.
Mr. Moorely?
Yes, sir.
Would you or Mr. Dickey want to...
Um, I, I'd be glad to. So, this ordinance was created in response to, um, basically a customer service issue, um, with the good intention of trying to help out somebody or some persons who might have been negatively impacted by lot split actions of the past. What I mean by that is some lot split actions have taken place on some properties in the city without following the city process or without getting city approval. Um, there's another reason for that, and, and it's beyond the scope of this. Um, we, we can debate that another time because the county will allow that to happen. But it doesn't follow our code. So what we end up with is a handful of properties which are enumerated on pages two and three of this, uh, cover, if properties A through L, that we're aware of that were split without city approval. And then when a person purchases these properties, they want to build on them, and it's, it's noted, well, this doesn't meet city code because it never received a lot split. And there could be attendant issues with that, for example, uh, ingress and egress. So with the, with the intent of trying to help out, um, people or personal who brought this to light, that, you know, they weren't aware of this, they bought it, they invested some, some of money in purchasing this property and are finding themselves challenged to build on it. We, uh, proposed this ordinance, and this ordinance would allow an, uh, an after-the-fact lot split, a sort of an amnesty for that particular limited situation when, uh, certain conditions apply. And one of those conditions, and key to that condition, is the person requesting it is not the person who created the illegal lot split. So these would be subsequent owners that are looking for this recourse. So put in there was, uh, several things to, uh, apply. One of them would be the character of the district. And there was an email that came around today or yesterday from Mr. Campbell, who, uh, stated he is opposition to this because the, uh, um, some of these lots are on the street on which he lives. And he argued that it goes against the residential character of the district. And of course, that's one of the findings of this ordinance if we adopt it, is that it has to comply with the character. So in, in general terms, what, he's not here to speak to it, and perhaps he's on the line, but if I could say my understanding of Mr. Campbell's objection, this street is full of single-family homes on relatively large lots. And down the street a little ways, further to the east, there are some of these illegally created lot splits, which would create two houses on the same size lot that everybody else has one house on. That density increase is what he would oppose. Um, I could certainly let him speak for himself if he's on, if he's on the line. But that's it. In, in general, um, the properties in blue shown on the screen now would be granted this amnesty if this ordinance was passed, if they were not the owner at the time the lot was split, and if the properties would, uh, also fit with the residential character of the district. So there's arguments for and against this, um, to be considered by council. Um, we're happy to do, go whichever way council wants to go. Dave, did I cover everything? Folks?
Okay, um, Mr. Todd, a vote against this, what would it do to the current property owner?
The property owners would be required to seek some other relief. Obviously, they can try to go through the city, uh, lot split procedure. Um, if they were successful, they would be able to build one home on each lot. Um, if they weren't successful, another option could be a variance. Uh, there is a long history of, of zoning change on this property, on these, some of these properties. Um, just a quick recap, in the, sometime in the last 30 years or 40 years, uh, as I understand it, some of those properties were once zoned R2. Um, so the properties in the picture there, um, let's say the ones closest to Ridgewood were once zoned R2. They were then rezoned R1 at some point in the past, some 30 years ago or so. Um, interestingly and curious, uh, just to the north and south of those properties are, are two zoning lots. Also, to the east of them are R3. Typically, you'll see R1, R2, R3 as a kind of a stair step in zoning. Um, density increases as you go through those numbers, R1, R2, or 3. So there's a reason why typically R1 isn't right up against R3. So, uh, you've got that out there as a scenario that, yeah, maybe a variance might be something they might look for or look to, um, if the council doesn't approve this. Um, I don't know what other options would be, Dave. Can you think of any other options?
Actually, the, I mean, if, if this ordinance didn't pass, it, it, first of all, the, the ordinance is an administrative, it proposes an administrative lot split where, where the, the city staff would be able to approve these lot splits on these very, on this, under these very limited circumstances. So if this ordinance doesn't pass, the only remedy that the property owner has is that they have to go through the, um, either the subdivision of land requirements plat, or submit a lot split application. Um, and that lot split application would have to go before the Planning and Zoning Board and the City Council, um, under the norm, under the current process. Uh, because what's going to happen, and it's already happened on some of these properties, and Dave can speak to it more eloquently than I, that the property owner, this innocent third-party property owner comes to the city and wants to pull a building permit on this unlawfully subdivided land, and Dave's going, I had no record that this land was, um, approved for subdivision, and Dave is in a, between a rock and a hard place, cannot, um, issue any permits, um, until this illegal subdivision of land issue is resolved. Right now, again, the only way to resolve it would be to come in for subdivision of land plat or a lot split application and go through the process after fact. And, um, this again, this ordinance only proposes a very limited administrative exception to the already, uh, established procedures in the code.
Can I ask a question? What I'm wondering, does this lot split approved by Provar County?
Yes. That, this is the Provar County Property Appraiser map that we're looking at. So this is the data that the property appraiser has, has approved by the county.
Well, not the cap, well, not Provar County Commission, no. It's, what happens is the property owner, um, divides the land into more different parcels, more parcels than they, than they have. Um, and then they take their deed down to, uh, the clerk of the court and records the deed, and that deed makes its way to the property appraiser and the tax collector. And on the property appraiser and tax collector maps that you're seeing here, they, they record the deed and redraw the lines, um, on, on their maps. So which, what you end up seeing is what you see before you tonight, um, property that, um, a property owner went down, recorded deeds, that the deed was accepted by the clerk of the court, and they divided the land. The only problem is, um, the city's ordinance requires that the property owner also come to the city, can, city for approval of that subdivision of land. And that, that's the missing piece, that they didn't get the city's approval. So from a development permit standpoint, the city doesn't recognize what was recorded at the clerk of the court's o- o- office because it hasn't been reviewed for code compliance, minimum lot size and compatibility with the surrounding area. Um, you know, you all make those decisions. The city makes those types of compatibility and, and, and land development, lot size requirement, uh, requirements, not the clerk of the court or property appraiser.
Can I just add on to that? I, I think Councilmember Brown's question is exactly the, the same one I had. Um, so, very helpful answer. Why this administrative approval, this ordinance will allow administrative approval for these property owners. Why don't we just keep our ordinances and send them back through the subdivision of land plat and/or lot split process?
That's an option.
But, but, you know, why, why was this, why is this a better option than that? Because what I like about those processes is that if they need a variance or they need, that the, the community, the neighborhood around them has to be notified. And that was one of the issues I saw. And so instead of having the, the resident, or the, the staff determining what matches the residential feel... what matches the residential feel, it it involves all of the community that are actually going to be abutting that parcel. They're notified and they can get involved with the process and there's no better way to match up residential feel than those residents. So I guess, why was this, why did this become the preferred path opposed to just telling them, hey, go back through our process like Councilmember Brown was saying?
Good, these are excellent points. Um, as the manager indicated, there was a certain cut customer service.
It was a customer service.
Trying to trying to resolve, um, you know, this issue a little bit more expeditiously. So you're not taking um these certain certain limited property owners through a, you know, a three, four month process. So I mean, if the council wants to keep the current process, um, you can cut to the chase right now and just say, we're not gonna take any action on this ordinance and we'll live under the current rules, right?
It would die for lack.
It'd die for lack of any uh interest on the council's part. You can do that right now.
But that's what we do about the person that bought this lot this.
They're gonna have to go through the um lots split process after the fact. They're gonna have to submit an application. They're gonna have to go to the planning and zoning board, go through David Dickey's gauntlet and um and make its way to the council.
Well, anyways, I'll speak. I'm just looking for an expeditious process. Believe me, and I've repeated, I've made a statement to this council multiple times. I'm gonna make it again tonight. As a staff person, I do not like putting myself or any of the staff in a position where we have to make decisions that perhaps are better suited for Justice Councilmember Morrison is saying, this board, P and Z board, Board of Adjustment, that's why we have these boards. I don't wanna make those decisions. I don't wanna be put in that situation where I'm gonna upset somebody, gonna make somebody happy. I'd rather say, we have a process. We have words for it. I'm completely supportive of that. If that's what the council would love to do, I'm hundred percent.
Yeah, and that's, thank you very much, Dave. It, I wouldn't want that burden either. And it's a, we've heard, I think, from a lot of the neighbors in this area, there was some outreach efforts and they are very concerned. Um, because the the public notice requirements for a variance are among the most uh exhaustive. And I think that what they're trying to do here would typically require a variance. It would certainly require our P and Z board with their expertise to specialize and focus in on this. So I know we got public comment, but I I think no action tonight might be the best. And I am happy to meet with those property owners and listen as a representative. And I think this whole council is happy to to meet with them for to so that we can listen to them and maintain good customer le- legislative representation, um, if if I'm missing something.
I received a call last night about eleven or eleven fifteen. And um, the property owner on Central was very upset and I can understand why. And I think that that, I think what you're proposing, uh, Councilman Morrison, is a good idea. Uh, I think we really need to study this one and come up with an equitable solution for everyone. I do feel that one resident uh notified everyone. He did put a notice in everyone's door on Central and Surf Drive and that's why I got the telephone call at eleven fifteen. So I believe um there are some very upset residents about this. So I do think that it's probably as best to study it and come up with a better solution and let the people go through the process according to our ordinances.
I know it personally, no. I know this is a, it is a single family area. It's a very nice single family area. And what happens with this type of case is we had single family areas years ago that turned into two and three houses on one lot. This is the wrong wrong thing to do. The county is creating a problem and it's we have an unsuspecting property owner that bought property they can't build on enough. So he's gonna have to do the burdensome task coming in and doing to go through that. Lots put back. And we had an incident on Jefferson Avenue that got built three townhouses on a single parcel and didn't split them and sold them and it got it gets hairy and it really ruins it. And it's this lot split by the county and not even it's bad. It's a bad situation. It creates a problem for the city. Now, I'm I'm not uh in favor of just splitting a lot when you wanna do it. I don't think it's right to these people in this neighborhood.
It's such a nice residential area. It would have been nice and for me to see the houses facing Central. Personally, this is just what the aesthetics of it, it's the compatibility of the neighborhood. It would have been nice to have, you know, lots and houses facing that way. I see that, I see where the problem is. But I mean, I just think for the compatibility of the neighborhood. Yes, uh, exactly.
It'll ruin it.
Exactly. I think we should.
If that's the easiest solution to do it, I'm I'm in favor of just not taking any action, let them go through the process. I agree.
And I know you gotta go to public comment, but question, you might already know this, Mayor. They can merge and combine these lots too, because that one thing I noticed um when I did research, these, when it was first presented, it sounded like like if you look on Surf Drive, the most western parcel there, that little square down there, it it sounded like, you know, if these were two separate owners, man, that that would be a problem because now you've got two owners and they've got this lot and it's so small and they don't meet the minimum dimensions and they bought it. You know, if they sold off one of the parcels, but I think all of these, the same owner owns both of them. So they actually have the ability to go back as another option, a third, and merge these, right, or or combine them.
Yes, but they couldn't build two houses on it then.
Right, so, but but two houses don't really match the residential feel of this neighborhood. And I think that's, okay, just making sure that that would be a third option.
We have another Long Point Road, it's the road oath.
Right.
That was all single family when it was zoned and then it became multifamily, became double duplexes on it. Just, it just ruined the single family neighborhood. And that's what would happen here. Go back to the way it was and let it be. And I I think I would, I would be probably in the motion to uh not take any action, just let them, let them undo their mess.
Yeah, we would still need pub- public comment though, Mayor.
I only have one card on this issue. Uh, Ian, are you still here? Okay.
Thank you so much for letting me speak to this issue. We live on Surf Drive, uh, almost directly across from this double lot that you can speak about. I invite you all to drive down Surf and up Central. It is a beautiful neighborhood. We love it. My parents built this house in nineteen ninety-four and my husband and I have been looking forward to our retirement, our entire rest of our life, so that we could move here and be part of this great community. So I invite you to see why we oppose splitting the lots in that neighborhood and I think you already understand. Uh, unfortunately, the three prominent lot owners represented by these two squares are not innocent victims of real estate ignorance. They are quite knowledgeable and experienced um folks in this town. While the thirteen to fifteen lots represented here are not a massive number, they are about a third of our neighborhood. Uh, our neighborhood space, which currently carries twenty-eight residences. So splitting these lots would certainly negatively impact us. There was no reason to split a lot other than to build multiple homes. Our additional concern, which may be unfounded, but perhaps not, is that the double lot that's portrayed there on Surf Drive could then, after being combined, possibly be tried to split the opposite direction, which would make very narrow, long lots and still be able to hold two homes. Property owners certainly have the right to develop their property according to ordinances developed to maintain the integrity of our neighborhoods, just like we did when my dad built this house in nineteen ninety-four. Please help us by maintaining adherence to the established ordinance, which all the current residents of East Central and Surf, east of Caneveral Beach Boulevard, have done. Don't reward and encourage lot splits. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Daniel, do you have any hands?
Uh, yes, sir. We have two hands raised at this time. The first one is Mr. Patrick Campbell. Mr. Campbell, I'm unmuting you. You can unmute yourself and you have three minutes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, well, certainly I had a very well constructed uh three minute speech uh that you just kinda made unnecessary by saying you're gonna take no action because that's really what I wanted to have happen. Uh, I will point out, this is not a zoning issue at all. Uh, this is about uh what's perceived to be unillegal lot splits that the city didn't know about. I don't know much about that. I do know what I can see on the city website and since nineteen sixty-four, these properties have been shown on your zoning maps exactly they as they are now, except for the Sharopa Lot, which looks like it's been combined. My whole point in the email that I sent out and the door postings that I put out, that was me that did that, was the lack of citizen visibility to what you're trying to do. Uh, following the existing processes and having people come in and apply for a permit and be told how to go fix this problem, gives citizens the ability and gives you the requirement to notify everybody so we can weigh in properly and and not have somebody like me having to wander around on Sunday morning, putting the information out on people's doors. So rather than read what I put together, I will just point out that I sent a rather detailed summary of what my issues are to all the council members and the board members. Uh, and I do appreciate you putting this away and and using your existing processes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Daniel?
Uh, there is one more hand raised, uh Marco Hakama. Marco, you have three minutes.
Sir, I want to thank you for your service and council members for staying, um, in fact, almost three hours beyond the time limit of your meeting today. But I echo Mr. Campbell's thoughts and would ask you to please that if our owners that bought these parcels in the seventies and early eighties uh would please honor the process of going through lot splits and um proper legal approvals to in fact um change these efforts. And I would ask, please, um, Mayor Hoag and the council, would you also consider, back to item ten that we spent several hours on this evening, um, that I foresee the same problems coming up in these actually same parcels, if we open it up to multifamily and transient rentals and intermittent attendance to have beach holidays. Have we considered fire attention, police attention? Do we have sewer? Do we have power? Do we have water that can actually reach these properties? And do we have the infrastructure that can support these? And I would ask please your attention just to support this as well as the reason that we bought on East Central is that it's considered a best address of Caneveral, a- as is Surf Drive. And these are beautiful houses that people have spent years making. And I would ask please your consideration that we can maintain the sanctity and the serenity and the safety and security of the properties that we have now developed. So please, consider this. And uh Mayor Hoag, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Good evening. Daniel, do you have another hand?
Uh, no, sir. No other hands raised at this time.
Hey. Nobody else wants to speak, so we'll close public discussion and bring it back to the council.
Yeah, I agree.
Mr. Mayor, it sounds like we got it. I think this brings me to just kind of a thought that that when you think about, um, call it special interest, whatever, when you talk about how big corporations get these handouts from politicians, I always say the same thing. You know, the corporations are always gonna ask, shame on the board, shame on the legislators, shame on Congress for letting them do it. So I'm very proud that this council stands unified and says, property owners, I'm sure they would like this, but we have a process and we're, I think, doing, we're on the right side of this issue as a as a board by by saying, no, thank you. And um, makes me happy to say that. And thanks to uh Mr. Patrick Campbell for his advocacy. Anytime I see that um in this community and and all the citizens who send emails to to show that there is power in the people, there's power in the voice. So thank you. That's it. And if you're looking for a motion, I'm happy to make one.
We, everybody ready for a motion? The only way, right way to do is uh undo the mess and let them undo it because there's other messes other than this this that are in this city. And there's a lot of people that don't realize that they're buying non-conforming units that are lot split that shouldn't be lot split. And that's something that we really need to find out how we can fix that. Because if you got a duplex and you bought half of a duplex, you're only on a thirty-two, thirty, thirty foot six lot or whatever it is, you can't add on to the house. And these people are thinking they can do it. So I I'm I'm all in favor of anytime a lot split is done without going through the process of the city, I'm against. Against letting you do it. Oh, we'll take a motion if we're ready for it.
I'm making a motion that we take no action on item number five.
I second it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brown and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond. Hold the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, we're going to item number six, which is ordinance number twelve, twenty twenty-one, first reading, Mr. Gargani.
Hey, ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty-one, an ordinance of the city council of the city Cape Canaveral, Florida, mending section six dash fifty-one of the city code related to open containers of alcoholic beverages in public places, providing for the repeal of parry consistent ordinances and resolutions incorporated into the code, severability and an effective date. This is first reading of this ordinance. Um, this ordinance is uh being proposed by our precinct commander in part um to mirror a regard, a a regulation that's currently on the books in Brevard County. In addition, there's some language that's being proposed in subparagraph C of the ordinance to address um the the reality that the division of alcoholic beverage will um allow for a licensed uh consumption of alcoholic beverages outside of a premises provided, you know, it complies with uh, you know, local zoning laws, et cetera. So this ordinance um also carved out that that exception to make that point clear. Mr. Mayor.
What do you counsel? Mr. Kellum, you wanna start?
I'm gonna start with uh asking the commander for his take on this and what's happening in the county.
Can you hear it?
Yeah.
But let me, let me start off. I think we've got a little bit of time. You get to make a motion as detailed as possible. But I don't get to come up here that often and talk. So, uh, but I I truly mean this with all my heart that um I my gratitude, I can't express it enough, the the partnership that the sheriff has all the time with our elected officials and the city manager, I'm talking morally and his exceptional staff. We truly, truly mean that and I commend that, we share all the time that uh, I wish there were other elected bodies who was this easy to work with, indicate things done. So on behalf of the sheriff, very much. Now, this honestly, thi- this ordinance has been around, and when I started as a deputy in nineteen two out here, we had the the this ordinance in effect. It kind of scratches our head because we can go to no man's land, aim on by the sea and have the county ordinance. And if we had somebody at the And if we had somebody at the seven eleven with an open container, we could take enforcement action. But if you go across the street to Yogi's, then we have no law enforcement. This is essentially what the change is gonna be. It allows us to, to help improve that quality of life in, in Cinnaveral. I can tell you, if I had young kids and my wife was stuck by Cumberland Farms or Race Track, Circuit K, any of our convenience stores, you grab, you know, uh, uh, some eggs or milk or bread or anything, bring home to the house. And we had people out there drinking and having whiskey, wine, beer, whatever it might be, an open container by statute. I wouldn't want her to stop there. I really wouldn't. That, that's not an image that we want here in Cape Canaveral. Uh, and we don't want to take a position that we can own that. So, um, it, it, right now as it stands, if we have that happen on any business property, we have no enforcement action, law enforcement. We can make a citizen contact. But I can tell you, the people who are doing these infractions and having open containers, they got other things going on for lives now. We don't want that either. But it's always been on the books, you know, on city, uh, streets, crossovers, any of the parks. Uh, you, you, you can't have an open container. Uh, this just adds that element to any type of businesses that are open to the public, non-residential. So you can still be in your front yard and, and have, uh, another beer, be, uh, or whatever type of container. But like Anthony was saying, uh, in the language, you can see there in section of C. It, it talks about the different bars that we have here in, in Cape Canaveral, to include our hotels and different places, as long as they're either properly permitted and have the authority or have the permission through, uh, the city management or their liquor license indicates that they can serve, dispense alcohol, possess it on the property, like Florida Beer Company or other, other companies here. Cape Canaveral, they can definitely. But again, that's not our focus. Our, our focus isn't to go to the Radisson or, or other area hotels and find a tourist that is coming back to the beach and pops up with a beer in the parking. That's not the intent. The intent is our businesses that are along eight one A and having people, you know, homeless folks, when people are already intoxicated, stopping there to drink more in front of closed businesses or in front of our communities. So that was the driving force behind it. And that's essentially what we're doing. The, the county, if you're not familiar, the county, um, they have one commissioner that brought up and one said that a container works. Obviously, you don't know that could, sheriff five, we didn't call so all five commissioners. Was actively opposed to.
I said, why would you want to do that?
I, well.
I think it's something that we needed for a long time. I always thought you all had that.
See, it's probably why you don't see it. I think a lot of people in the city think it's illegal.
Right.
Yeah. How many years? Seventy-five, sixty-five?
Ninety-five.
I was going that, you know, so I was going that.
Um, I just was wondering if somebody does get caught with, um, open container, what kind of fine is that? What, is it a?
It's a second degree misdemeanor.
Second degree, okay.
Walking down the street is seen every day.
And not everybody goes to jail.
I see it all the time.
Right.
It all depends a lot on attitude. And, and again, they, they might not be from the area. Take opportunity to educate them. You know, some people that are visiting, handling the law of the beach crossover and have a cold beer. What do we serve them if I put them in jail and a security officer can't include?
Educate, educate.
And what about the people that go down to the beach and have a few beers while they're on the beach? Is that?
Not on the beach. Can't do it on the crossovers.
You have questions?
Well, after that eloquent, eloquent presentation by Commander, I say we go ahead and accept this ordinance twelve dash twenty-one as written or item six, without debate or without question.
I second it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And I'm, I'm sorry, we're both sorry. The, uh, the, I think about a business like Aerial Adventures or what is it? Uh, they serve, I think, for my, like beer outside. Can we have a process that if, uh, whether it's a license where they're safely, you know, it kind of makes sense there. It's under the trees, they're all hanging out. Parents are watching their kids dangle from the trees and, but the, um, could we, could we work on giving people a responsible way to opt in, um, to be able to serve?
I noted that, that if there were a license, like the hotels and businesses that are licensed.
Licensed business.
You got people sitting at a restaurant outside on a table.
But they have an alcohol license.
Yes.
Aerial Adventures does?
Yeah, sure.
Really?
Of course they do.
Better have one. Now you got the manual one and you're gonna go and check them all.
Sure, they should have a beer.
Hope I.
He has.
No, uh.
He has.
I didn't realize that. I thought that, okay.
Now, you, you got people gonna be at a restaurant outside, sitting there like the little place, sitting outside drinking a beer at a restaurant. They're not gonna bother them.
Okay.
Unless.
So it's really the, but, but I'm confused. It's a convenience store. It's because it's all about opening. Uh.
It's an almost sidewalk and drink.
So today, in Cape Canaveral, Cumberland Farms, if somebody goes in, grabs a.
Probably just don't want to keep repeating that just in case. So a lot of people watch the meeting.
Somebody, if somebody goes in. The little table and chairs outside, uh, Cumberland Farms.
It's legal.
It's legal there.
If it, it'll walk out into the right of way. You put one foot in the street or on the right of way.
So, and, and just to be honest, I, I get this, but my point is, is that, that they don't have a license, do they?
Cumberland Farms does.
Of course, they have.
They have license to sell it, but not open it, not dispense it.
So there's a difference between Cumberland and Aerial Adventures and their licenses?
On premises, consumption is different.
Okay. My concern just comes back to if, if a business wants to be able to, to have people drink outside, especially with COVID on their property, they're okay with it. They have a process for that. For the people that don't want, Commander Walters needs to have the teeth and the ability to enforce it. If we can address that, I'm good with this.
Effectively address that, Mayor. That's, Mayor, that, that is handled by the state license. State license will have a, um, with specificity where on the premises consumption is, is authorized.
So Cumberland Farms can go get that license and we're good.
With the state.
With the state authority. Okay, thank you. Let's, can we do it? Ten fifty-seven, sorry, Councilmember Brown.
That's right.
I second it. I second it.
Oh, yeah, I'll get a motion.
Oh, happy duck.
Yeah. Mayor, we have a public hearing requirement, a public comment.
Yep, we will. Mr. Cullum, do you have anything you wanna add?
No, I'm good.
Daniel, do you have anybody with their hands raised out there?
Uh, no, sir. No hands raised at this time.
I don't have any cards. Anybody here want to? Okay, Mr. Brown, you make your motion.
I'd like to make the motion that we accept, was it item six as written after the presentation with Commander.
I second it.
That's ordinance twelve, twenty twenty-one. We have a motion and a second to accept ordinance twelve, twenty twenty-one.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Cullum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
You got it, Commander. Thank you. Everybody, thank you for being here and council, thank you for the expedient meeting tonight. We are adjourned.